One thing I will tell you, we have installed the new AV equipment. Hopefully you'll see an improvement. I know you'll see an improvement both in audio quality and video quality. So kudos to Bobby and Abby and folks that made that possible. Thank you for adjusting your schedule to attend our first budget workshop here at 5:00. We have a lot we have to talk about and we will get through it. And so I'll make a couple of points and then we'll turn it over to the leadership team. You have before you, you received the other day, a copy of the budget where it stands right now. You also have a hard copy of the PowerPoint slides that you'll be looking at tonight. The, I will tell you that the budget is balanced at eighteen and a half cent. We kept the tax rate the same this year. We looked at some of our cost centers and we made some adjustments. We've done that before several years ago with the Powell bill money where we shifted some costs there. We've done that this year where we've shifted some costs to stormwater funds to pay for some equipment that we can use as part of our stormwater permit. The budget does call for one assistant town manager that you've talked about a month or so ago. And we have one staff member to serve that we talked about this year about adding next year to serve on the mowing crew on Highway 74. Hopefully if you've traveled along 74, you've seen the results of their work. It's looking much better than what it did when the state was doing it. We have some, let's see. If the staff votes to participate in social security, we would propose a 3.2% COLA and a 3% merit all at one time. If the vote is not successful, we'll continue with our traditional plan of how we do it. You'll notice when we get to the council, I did not put an adjustment in your compensation. We will let that be your decision on how you want to do that. I know you did an adjustment in your compensation. I think it was two years ago, but I did want to note that. Of the rest of the speakers here in just a minute, we'll talk about their specifics. We have received their original request. I have met with them along with the finance department and we have done some wheeling and dealing and here and there to get the budget balanced. We provide a lot of service out of eighteen and a half cent. I don't know of anyone that does as much as we do with eighteen and a half cent. And at the conclusion of the night's meeting, basically I'm going to need your guidance. One, if you feel like the second budget workshop is needed, that's fine. We'll schedule it this month sometime. But we'd like to know what specific areas you might have questions about or you want to get some more information on. If you're pleased with the overall track that we're going along, then we'll continue to tweak the budget and we will present you a budget. Typically we present it the first part of May before the public gets it or right around the time the public gets it. And of course, May 14th, there will be a formal presentation. If for some reason at the conclusion of this, you feel like you need some more information or you would like to sit down with some of the staff members to talk about some specific things that they're looking at, please get up with me and we'll schedule those meetings. And without further ado, I think our first speaker up is Jim Wadowitz who will talk about our revenue.
Good to be in front of you tonight. Clarence, your first budget. So welcome. We're glad you're here. Just take it easy on us. Okay, I'm going to start off, I'm going to take you through the revenues. And again, feel free to stop me, Tom, at any point. So this is a total slide that we added. You can see the pie. I'm going to start with ad valorem taxes. Next slide, please Bobby. So the ad valorem, nope. So yeah, we're, as Mike said, we're at eighteen and a half cents. Now our ad valorem tax is now coming in at 11 million, 307, 651. This represents about a 3.5% increase. That includes the property tax, the personal property, and the utility companies. Now, the only thing of concern here is that the property taxes went up 2.63%. Last year was 3.89. So we're going to keep an eye on that. But in total, it's about 3.87% increase. Next up is motor vehicle taxes are good. It's up 8.8%. Again, we get these dollars from Union County. And of course, we budget at 96%. Alicia Massey collects at about 99.9. So right off the bat, we take a conservative approach and that leads to about $300,000, $400,000 in fund balance every year. And I'll get to that again in a second. So thank you, Alicia, for your service. Next is sales tax. Again, very strong. Right now, we're running about 13% ahead of actual. I budgeted about 8% ahead of budget. So I'm projecting we're going to go out of the year at about 4.9 million. And I'm only projecting 4.7 for the 25 budget. I want to be conservative. Next up is a very important one, investment income. We're fortunate to have quite a few dollars in the bank. Interest rates have been strong. We're running about 140,000 a month. For 25, I budgeted about 125,000 a month. Took it down a wee bit. There's some talk about dropping interest rates. All other avenues are budgeted conservatively. The next thing I want to talk about is fund balance. Now, we've used fund balance now for the social security Mike mentioned, and I know Carrie's going to talk about it later. It's about a $250,000 commitment by the town council if the vote goes through. So I put that 250 in fund balance revenue. Our last audit, we had about 21 million in available fund balance. And I'm of the position, these are the folks that earn the fund balance, I don't have any problem using a bit of it. So our fund balance is in there. This is my ninth budget. Boy, how time flies. I can remember when Indian Trail was looking for a crackpot, I mean a crackerjack up in New York and then I came in. But it's been great. And New York can learn a lot from North Carolina, from Treasurer Falwell to the LGC. It's a great place to be. So our revenues, again, as Mike said, we're in balance to our expenses and everything I feel is reasonable. Mike reviewed them. Any questions on the revenue side? Clarence, any questions on that? Next, I'm going to take you through some of the cost centers. And again, stop me if you're, Bobby, if you're a governing body. So the governing body, look at all those accomplishments. As Mike mentioned, no adjustment in salary. And then we also removed 4,500 and grants outside services. It's not in the budget this year. Next Bobby, thank you. So you see the budget is actually down for the governing body and that's, thank you for that. That helps. Salaries are flat and we took all 4,500. Everything else is pretty much in line. There's money, Mike ensured there's money in there for training if you guys want to go. Next slide, please Bobby. Administration, this is an interesting one this year. A new position. We have an assistant town manager budgeted to start July 1st. We removed the election cost. That's good. It's not an election year. We checked on the hotel tax and that will be a Union County. So no, that saves us about $39,000 this year. Next year it'll be back in. Tom and Dennis will be running next year, which is a good thing. Let's see. And then we increased the training budget. Ms. Trina is going to be a certified tax clerk, so town clerk, I'm sorry. And we're going to have her get the appropriate training. And she's great. She's going to be here for a while. Next budget, please. So you can see that's up, but a big part of that is the new assistant town manager that's going to make us more productive. Next up is finance. Again, we're proud of the AAA rating. We got the GFOA distinguished budget award. Thank you to my staff. The only real increase here in the budget is our audit went up about 10,000. Her contract, she's doing more work. They have the ARPA and the SEIF grants have to get the yellow book. So, and again, we're blessed to have her. And that's the only increase there. Next up, tax department. Again, a very efficient department. We have a new position, half position started. She's supporting tax and Adam. And she's a very good hire, very nice, very positive person. So that's in for a full year this year. So that's most of the increase. And we also have increased our banking. And that's a good thing because the more money we have for the bank charges, that's the money Union County charges us for the motor vehicle. So that's a good thing. Next up, and again, I forgot to say, so right now, these budgets have a 3% COLA in there as of July 1st. Before I get to you Abby, I'm going to say we have debt service. Now, our debt service is down this year. That's later in the presentation, but I must will take it while I'm up here. It's down about 40,000 this year, which is a good thing. And that's based on the interest becomes less because we make our principal payments on time. But a good thing is we have that nickel on the debt service where we're going to put about $3 million transfer in. 1/8 goes right to debt, but the other 1.2 million goes directly for our capital projects. So that's another great thing. And I know Engineer Todd uses that money as well as he can. We have contingency budget at 250,000. Now, we're budgeting that again for rainy day. As of April 9th, 2004, we have not used this year's allotment. So that 250,000 is still there, but it's good to have there. Mike, you want to add anything?
Yeah, let me add just a couple quick ones. Thank you Jim, appreciate that.
Abby, if you want to come on up here, I'll just make a couple of quick points. You heard Jim say that while our tax base has grown three plus percent, what they're seeing at the county level is the real estate has not grown as much, but the personal property tax has. Okay? So it's kind of balanced out. Something we'll be keeping an eye out, I think we'll be good this year on it. Reevaluation is next year and we're already looking towards that thing. The other thing is the second leading pot of money that we get is through intergovernmental revenues. Intergovernmental revenues come from a number of different sources. One of them is the sales tax. And we know how the county distributes the sales tax. You've heard that. Sometimes the legislature will go in and they will change the formula on how they distribute sales tax to the county. Four or five years ago, there was a senator out of Onslow County down east that got the formula changed so that the metro areas didn't receive as much sales tax because they changed it from the point of sale to some type of population distribution. I say all of that to say this, it's simply, I think we're going to be fine this year. The readings I'm getting out of the short session is they want it to be really short. But as you look five, 10 years down the road, it's going to be very important to look at how Raleigh handles some of the intergovernmental transfers because that is a major source of revenue for us. When you look at where we distribute property tax, you know, we eat a lot of it up on good, you know, priority services. Without further ado, I'll turn it over to Abby.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll do my best to make this short and sweet, but please ask me any questions as we go. So just a few of the accomplishments or things that we've been working on this year. We enhanced the town's live streaming capabilities. Actually have some professional live streaming equipment. They look a lot better, sound a lot better now. We started using a text messaging system through our MailChimp, our e-newsletter account. So we've added that as another way to reach out to folks in the community. As Mike mentioned, we just, as of last week, upgraded the equipment in this room. So the sound, we have a new projector where it's a lot clearer. The other one was outdated. The bulbs were like $400 to replace every time. So this one is brand new and will last a really long time for us. We will shortly be installing computers in the closed session in engineering conference rooms. Then all the conference rooms will finally have computers and those capabilities. And then we've been upgrading outdated equipment in several departments. And thanks to Bobby, we've started purchasing directly from Dell instead of the IT vendor, which means we're getting the state contract rate and getting things for a lot cheaper than we were. So that's been saving us some money this year, which has been great. Some things we're looking forward to in next year's budget. We're also needing to replace some of the end-of-life equipment in some of our other rooms, including the large community room downstairs. That also includes the projector and screen because they're about seven years old at this point. So at some point, we'll be needing to replace them very soon anyway. We'll also replace some end-of-life computers and other equipment in the public works and parks and rec departments. We are adding, it's called, a software called Moncito. It's for our website to ensure it is ADA compliant. So it scans our website, not only checks for things like broken links, misspellings, but makes sure it's accessible for those who are using screen readers or things like that. So this is kind of following in line with our ADA transition plan as well. And then again, kind of replacing some end-of-life equipment in the other community rooms and executive conference room. So as you can see, we're not looking for really anything major new. A lot of that increase is just our regular renewals for all of the software that runs. You know, so we, the internet is operational at the parks, so that's in there now. You know, just our regular five, 10% renewals that we see for the budget software and those sorts of things that come out of this budget, plus some of the equipment upgrades that we want to do. But that really about covers it. We're not changing anything and we're not really doing anything big or major, just updating some of our old equipment. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
All right. Our next up is Carrie Warner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will continue with the short and sweet presentation like everybody else is doing. So just want to talk about some accomplishments. We've done DISH training for each department this year. We've also done harassment training for supervisors and employees. Development plans are in the process of being completed for employees. Our goal was to have 100% completed by June 30th. So we're still working on that. And that's something that we just started doing this year and it's been very successful so far. We do, we have been doing safety meetings monthly and I'll have to give Adam and his team credit for that, but that is something that was a goal for us this year as well and we have had one every month so far. So good job, Adam. Another thing that has been an accomplishment is we had three new positions that were added in the budget and all three positions were filled. So we had, we hired Lindy, our customer service rep. Kedron is our parking rec specialist and Ron Sugars was hired as our maintenance tech. But I think our biggest accomplishment this year is that we have hired 11 full-time employees and six part-time staff. That's a lot. And I have to give credit to all of our team because we've all had a part in this. Hiring an employee is not as easy as it sounds. It involves setting up their technology. It involves getting them set up in payroll. It involves recruiting. It involves interviewing. So it's not easy to hire 11 employees. And it also involves training. It involves orienting them. So it's a lot involved. So I think that was a really great accomplishment for all of us and our team. So good job, everybody. For, next slide. For some of the highlights for FY '25, I'm just going to talk about some of the increases that you'll see. We did have a 4% increase in our medical premiums. Wasn't surprised by that. We've had no increases for the past two years. So the fact that we just got a 4% is actually pretty good. And we've added a lot of new employees in the past two years. So that's probably the reason for the increase. Our dental vision and life insurance premiums have remained the same. So that's good. In the budget, you'll see, as Jim talked about, the 250,000, if the social security vote is passed, is part of my budget. So staff training, I haven't increased that, but I just wanted to let you know what we're looking to do the next fiscal year. We're going to do some more customer service training, CPR and first aid training, some leadership training and development for our high potential employees. We're going to continue doing diversity, equity, inclusion training. We're going to explore some core strengths training. And then we're going to continue to do safety and risk management training through our league of municipalities. And the last thing I want to talk about is social security. As you know, in our last meeting, unanimously voted for us to have a vote on social security. So we've talked about a couple of different things for funding this. You've already approved the funding of the 250,000, but we just, we're thinking about the employees and how it would affect them. So if they vote yes, that 6.2% is going to come out of their paycheck. So we decided to change some things up. Nothing is going to be drastically different, but right now typically we have a COLA in July and then we have merit increases on an employee's anniversary date. So what we're considering is moving everybody's merit date to July 1st along with the COLA of the 3.2%, which Mike recommended. And if the staff votes for social security, that 6.2% will be effective July 1st. So if you take the COLA and the merit, it's 6.2%. And then you take the social security deduction, deduction of 6.2%, it would be a flat increase or a flat, employees essentially wouldn't be receiving an increase, but they wouldn't be taking a hit. So that's what we were kind of proposing, just to kind of make it a little bit easier on employees and their paycheck if they do vote for social security. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
What's the staffing levels for the, for the town hall, I should say?
Right now, we have two vacancies in the public works and one of those was a right away position that was recently added. And then we have one vacancy in engineering.
So from the town manager to the guy that mows the lawns, how many people is that, do we have in town hall now?
Right now, we have 53.
Fifty-three.
That's the total work staff. Is that what your question, the work in this building?
From Jim to Adam to whoever, yeah.
So you're talking about the total full-time staff?
Total, full-time staff, or staff in general, yeah.
53 full-time and 15 part-time.
Thank you.
Have you considered maybe a staggered COLA? Because when you just do like 3%, then someone making 100,000 gets 3,000. Someone making 50 only gets 1,500. So it's kind of a less impact on the cost of living for lower wages.
We haven't considered that, but...
It seems more fair to the lower wage people if you, you know, either do a higher percentage for under 50,000 and higher up or maybe, I know in the past, we've done a, like a minimum. Personally, I'd rather see something like that where the lower wage people are kind of on par with the higher wage people.
We can look at that, Jim. We can look at that, at that option.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Our next up is Captain Andy Mullis.
You're going to let me go last because I was, you know, saving the best for last, but I guess I'll go with Mullis.
That's it.
Good afternoon. How are y'all?
Hey, everybody.
Nice. So real quick, starting off here, everybody kind of got the same direction when we had to put these slides together. So I'm going to brag just a little bit on our folks. But if you look here, the top graph there, it says Indian Trail CFS, that is total calls for service. It goes from 2020 all the way through '23. The one thing that I want to, I want you guys to look at there is we are within, there were 12,545 calls for service in all of Indian Trail. The folks that we have here in Indian Trail, our Indian Trail officers, answered 10,154 of those, which is what, 100, and I can't do that math real quick, just over 100 less than last year. So we're answering, the folks who you guys pay for to be here in Indian Trail are answering 80.94% of all the calls that come into Indian Trail. So if, and then the other folks who are answering, out of that 1254, like I think the Lake Park car there answered 122. And then all other could be highway patrol answering recs, could be Stallins getting a call that comes, just comes in just across the line, or any other Union County Sheriff's Office deputy that doesn't work for Indian Trail or in Indian Trail. All those other calls, the 2269 or 18.9% was answered by other folks other than us. If you look all the way over on the right hand of that slide, the 863 total there, what that is, is calls that Indian Trail deputies answered outside town limits. Or some of those doughnut holes that are inside the town where, you know, you're right there on top of it and we're dispatched to it because we're the closest, closest call. But if you look at what was answered, the 10,154 versus what was, you know, answered inside the town versus what was answered outside the town, the 863, that's a 92%, 8% difference as far as what they're answering inside versus out. You can look there too. Total calls for service between '22 and '23, we went down 1.1%. That's not a ton of calls, the call for service that we answered. Our self-initiated calls for service went down 22%. Part of that was when I came up here, I was, this was there again, going back to '24 when I came up here as a lieutenant. What I had, in talking to some folks and what I found out that some of our folks were doing, let's just say they would go into Bonterra, right? I don't know how many streets are in Bonterra, but let's say there's 100, right? So we were doing a self-initiated event in Bonterra and there's 100 streets and they may check on a different call for service for every street. So we kind of changed the guidelines on that. And that's where, why that number has kind of gone down. But I told those folks, I said, you know, if you get out on every one of those streets in Bonterra and you actually talk to one of those residents, then it's, it could be a different self-initiated call. But if you're just riding those streets in those neighborhoods, it's only one preventative patrol, if that makes sense. So that's kind of why those went down. But there again, alarm calls are down. Our response times, there again, more traffic and we went up from 7:41, 7 minutes and 41 seconds to 8 minutes and 6 seconds. So I think we're, we're still doing pretty well there. Our traffic stops went up 11%. And, you know, and our accidents that we handled went up 25%. And, and that's nothing more than, you know, we got those traffic cars that are out there working and our folks don't have to wait, you know, an hour, hour and a half, two hours on the highway patrol. No offense to the highway patrol, but they have shortages as well and they're responsible for the whole county. We got guys who work those recs here in Indian Trail and, and the folks who travel through here every day tend to sit on the road, on the side of the road or in a parking lot waiting on somebody to come work their rec a whole lot less time. Your type 1 crimes, you can see there, that's overall down 8%. You can see where all of those are. Again, if you look at those, I wanted to mention some of just the bigger ones there. If you look at the rates, they're up 5, you know, 500%. But when you go from zero to five, and keep in mind that that could have been something that someone is now 18, 19, 21 years old and they wanted to report something that happened when they were five. That doesn't mean that we had five of those incidents that occurred just this year. Robberies are down 57%. Aggravated assaults down 33%. Burglaries are about the same. Larceny's down 13%. But if you look at the motor vehicle theft, and I'm focusing a lot of this on our traffic guys, they're up 71.4%. It is no secret that we live right next door to Charlotte. I don't know what their, their numbers are, but we work with them routinely. A lot of what we're seeing on these motor vehicle thefts are folks, they're stealing cars. A lot of it is younger folks. Keep that in mind. Everybody who's watching in here, keep your cars locked up, it's fixing to be summertime. That stuff tends to go up during that time. But a lot of that is, is folks that are stealing cars in Charlotte. They come down here and do whatever they want to do and then they steal another one and go home. We're finding a lot of those stolen vehicles down here. We're working a lot of those. Like I say, we worked a case like that where our guys actually got into a chase with some, with a gang full of juveniles. And I believe the driver in that case, I'll have to go back and get you, it was over, in the 40s or 50s cases that he had had where he had been involved in stealing motor vehicles. So that's just, just one of those things we're trying to work on. And there again, while we're trying to get our traffic guys out there all, all we can. Next slide, please. Also, so here's what I want to do, focusing on those traffic guys. We got six guys. Two of those are traffic, or rec cars. The other four are just our traffic cars. Some of the things, this is over and above their calls for service. This is just the proactive policing that we try to do outside of working a rec, outside of answering a call. This is, like I say, just proactive work. In '24, they did three child seat checking stations, seven North Carolina driver's license checking stations. And I can get you the other numbers, but so, like if it was a driver's license checking station, I put in there the charges that were pertinent to driver's license. So 60 no operator's license charges came out of those seven. 16 driving while licensed revoked charges came out of those checking, those seven checking stations. In total, there were 121 other charges, whether it be seat belts, registration... whether it be seat belts, registrations, no insurance, whatever that was. And then we'd actually made one fugitive arrest off of one of our checking stations. Twenty seatbelt enforcement events. There again, sixty-four seatbelt citations, twenty-five other charges. We did twenty speed enforcement events, two hundred and twenty-nine speeding violations. You guys know traffic is, is, it's not gonna slow down in Indian Trail. So we're trying to do more than, as much as we can. Saturation patrols, just so you're clear on what a saturation patrol is, we have, we may be people who come in on their day off. It may be our six traffic guys. They work alternating schedules, but we'll say, hey, look, we're gonna take all, all six of you and we're gonna work next Wednesday. And we're gonna saturate seventy-four or old seventy-four between, you know, a certain area. Out of those three saturation patrols, we got ninety-one charges. Not looking for anything in particular, just any driving violation that we see. One traffic saturation enforcement invest, or initiative through GHSP or the Governor's Highway Safety Program. So what we did, we brought in other Union County Sheriff's Office deputies. This is just two Indian Trail. Marshall was here, Monroe, State Highway Patrol, Waxaw and Wingate were here. In that one, I'm not sure exactly how long that lasted. It was just a few hours. We got a hundred and two charges, driving charges out of that. And I, the the last thing I wanted to mention on this slide, we are having a big problem. Again, a large majority of this is coming out, the nexus of it is coming out of Charlotte. But fictitious or manufactured tags. We, I've tried to talk to people when you pull them over and they got a bad tag. Like, hey man, where'd you buy that tag? Well, I found a guy on Facebook and he, you know, said if I'd meet him at some restaurant and bring him fifty bucks, he'd bring me a tag. Anyway, what we're seeing is a lot of these folks have no insurance, no driver's license, a gamut of what they don't have. In twenty-three, we started recording those fictitious tags. We didn't have any way in our system to actually record how many of those we had stopped. So in June, we started, of twenty-three, we started recording how many of those tags we actually took or those vehicles that we stopped. Three hundred, agency-wide, three hundred and thirty-three stops that had fictitious tags. Two hundred and ninety-six of those were from Indian Trail. In twenty-four, this is January, February and March, just three months, agency-wide, we've done two hundred and one traffic stops based off of just fictitious or manufactured tags. A hundred and ninety-one of those are in Indian Trail. There again, it's, it's, and it's because we're, it's because of our location. It's just where we are. But that is something that we're seeing. Funny, funny story behind that. If you want to stop by over at the sheriff's office, we've got a box because typically if it's a metal tag, you turn that into the state. The the fake ones that are, you can't do anything with them. They're manufactured by somebody. We've got a box that's about the size of this podium and it's about half full now. So like I say, stop by and check them out, it's pretty funny. But that's it for that. Next one? So I think there may be, anyway, we'll keep going. Community services. So you guys know we have two folks who handle our community services events. Deputy Henry and Deputy Britt. Of those two, they handle all of our community services events. They've done seventeen car seat events, five daycare or preschool events, such as where they just go out to our preschools and and talk to the kids, whether it be bike safety, stranger danger, whatever it is. They've done five of those in the preschool, seven elementary school events, fourteen adult events, whether it's HOA meetings, VFW meetings, Senior Appreciation Day, whatever it is. They've done fourteen of those. Six bike events, I actually have one of those coming up. If anybody wants to get up early and ride to Poplin Elementary School, come on out. And that's gonna be a great time. But we're doing the bike to school events, we've done six of those. We took ten guys too, talking about how, just extra patrols, Halloween night. Ten folks, that's over and above what was scheduled to work on Halloween night. Ten extra folks that came in just for an extra set of eyes. And we rode around in in several different neighborhoods in Indian Trail and handed out candy. Now, was it, was it a PR event for us? Absolutely. I had a blast. Rode around on our side to side and handed out more candy than I thought imaginable. But had a big time doing it. But it's more eyes and ears that we have in these these neighborhoods. And actually, in Bonterra, we had a missing kid that night. And it was one of those ten that found him that night in that, in that neighborhood. So it pays off. And like I say, other town events that they handle, or, you know, just there in town events, the touch of truck litter sweeps and all those that you guys already know about. This one, this is, I wanted to touch on him because he is my right-hand fellow when it comes to town complaints for parking. And and I think, Mayor, you've been in on a few HOA meetings with him. But Deputy Henry is a wealth of knowledge. Last year alone, there were a thousand and eighty-three calls for service that came into Indian Trail just for an improperly, somebody called and said, somebody's parking terrible. Out of those, six hundred and ninety-five of those were handled by Henry. Now, if you've ever been in or or met with Henry, I love him to death, bless his heart, he can talk. You can't get away from him. He'll talk years off, but he's great at what he does, wealth of knowledge. To show you how good he is, he handled six hundred and ninety-five of those complaints. He went out and talked to the people and they said, you know what, we're sorry, we're gonna move our car. Out of that six ninety-five, there were thirty-six who said, yeah, we don't believe you. So he wrote them a town ordinance violation. Thirty-six of those, well, thirty-two of those said, oh, we're sorry, we won't do that again. There were only four of those that were just really hard-headed and said, we're not gonna move. And so I believe the town towed about four vehicles just off of what he did. But just wanted to bring that up because he he works and stays busy. On top of the golf cart permits, he handles all of those. So if you have a golf cart permit, call our office, canary will come out and 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 get you squared away. But that's it as far as extra stuff that we've done. Now, what are we asking for? I don't, had, this was, is straight from the county. It breaks your cost down by deputies, investigators, of which we have one here joining us tonight. Your, our sergeants, our lieutenants, the captain, which would be mine, our, our crime scene investigator, and then we have our admin support, our two ladies that sit up front. And I can promise you, their ears are wore out when they get home. They, they, they take more calls than than I can imagine. But it breaks it down, cost, and you guys are, like I say, welcome to look at that. If you look at the, it also breaks it, so we have a total of thirty-five employees that work from the sheriff's office that work here in Indian Trail. It gives you the total annual cost there, the four point six five nine, and then what your guys' quarterly cost is of that breakdown. Now, the county, if, as you can see in that first slide there, they had a phase one comping class study, all right? Why is the cost going up? It went from, it's going up nine point nine percent for those thirty-five folks. It went from four point two to four point six. Part of that is that comping class study. There, there will be a phase two part of that study. I'm not sure when that will be finished. I, I just, I wish I could tell you, but I just don't know. I don't know when that's gonna come out. But that is part of the, the, that nine point nine increase. There was also an increase of half of a sheriff's deputy. We talked about last year, if you guys remember, there was a big, we had a big discussion about those, those grant positions. So the town had paid seventy-five percent of both of those positions last year. That final quarter of, is what makes the half a position, which you guys will pick up a hundred percent of this year, this, in this fiscal year twenty-five budget. And also then you see an eight percent increase in the equipment and operating cost per officer. There again, that's because of vehicle costs there going up. One thing that we did too, our, in years past, our Indian Trail folks got a, those vehicles were, you know, we were, we're replacing those about every four years. We kicked that out to a five-year operating amortization. And so those vehicles will be staying here longer. Our, our county garage services them well. They're still in in really good shape in that, within that five-year span. So I think that will be a savings to you on that end. I did, in in our talks, when I talked to Mike, and I can get it for you guys too, but it was the, the breakdown of what that increase was and the amortization of of how many, you know, how much you were paying for it over the years. But we do have that, but there is an eight percent increase in cost. And don't quote me on this, I'm just, just off of the top of my head and I think it was in that. The, the vehicle cost went up from like thirty-something thousand to fifty-something thousand. So there's, there's, there's a big increase there that's just, it's out of our hands, you know? It's just one of those things, if you, unless you go and ride bikes, you're gonna have to pay for a vehicle.
If you want to see the list, it's about this long. It covers everything from holsters to guns to bullets to cars.
Training, ammo, cars, wear and tear on them, uniforms, there's everything.
Competitive salaries is in there probably, am I correct, chief? Where we have to stay current with the surrounding counties or towns.
That was part of our phase one and and why we went, we're just now, it, because of that phase one, chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but we went to, just, we're over, where our starting salary now is above fifty, which it was not before. So we were, before the, this phase one, we were the, the lowest paid agency in the county, starting salary-wise.
That's right.
But we are, like I say, we're not asking for any new positions because of that nine point nine percent increase. That's a, that's a pretty big hit at one time for the town. But that's what it is and I can answer any questions you guys have about it, or at least I'll try to. And if I can't, I'll find an answer for you. Yes, sir?
Well, so you're asking four point two and we've got budget four point six, so we're covering this? Okay, all right, that's, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the twenty-four, FY twenty-four is four point two. The county's asking four point six, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
And we've got that covered in the budget.
Right.
Yeah, it's four point six here on the budget.
That's correct.
I'm just curious, you mentioned your, all these, all these tags that get out there.
Mm-hmm.
Do your tag readers pick up those tags?
So we, we have some, we, we have some new tag readers that we're looking, that we're, that we're getting in into now. And, and part of that is, is we're trying to get that, yes, tag readers do read some of those. But as far as the, the tag readers that are up, that has to be, if we're looking for something specific, it has to be programmed into that system and then it will recognize, oh, you're looking for tag number one. Here's tag number, you know, so. But we do have some new tag readers that we're putting on vehicles and kind of in that process of getting everything connected so that our in-car system talks to the state system so that, right now it picks up on stuff, on local stuff. But it, we're, we're, we're working on that so that it picks up, again, state violations as well.
Andy, it looks like, like some of the worst crimes are down and the, the kind of, I don't know if it's correct, but you say heavy crimes or smaller crimes are, are up.
Yes, sir.
I just, I just want to say that the people in Indian Trail feel safe and you guys do one heavy job.
Well, I appreciate it.
You do, and something like you were talking about Officer Cumming. You, you said he did six hundred and forty-six, I don't remember.
Six ninety-five.
Right, but he knows every one of their names.
Yes, sir, he does.
That's, that's, that's the amazing part of it.
So, and, and just as a funny side note for you guys, so when, when I came up as a lieutenant, he said, come on, let, go ride with me one day. And I'm like, okay, well, we're gonna go. So he showed me where every one of you live. He said, this is so-and-so's house, this is so-and-so's house, this is, you know, he knows everybody's name by heart, knows your address, knows, he said, they drive this car and this car usually sits here and they've got, you know, I'm, if you, if you have never talked to him, you need to spend a little bit of time with him. Well, I say a little bit of time, you need to spend some time with him.
You will spend a little.
So I did, but just so you know, I did outlast him. That was one of my major accomplishments. When I first came up, I went back to the office and I'm like, hey, I won, just so you know. And, and when Hunky was here, he said, what are you talking about? I said, I just met with, actually, we were in Bonterra, looking at parking over there. And he says, he starts talking to me and finally he goes, LT, I know you're busy, let me just be quiet and you go on about your day. So I won the conversation, I didn't have to end it. He, he actually, I outlasted Henry on the first conversation I had with him, so. But yeah, great guy. Like I say, everybody we got works really hard, from our patrol guys and, you know, it's like you say, our, our major crimes are down, our guys are getting out there and and really getting with it. And we, they just, they come to work every day and they just do their job and I'm proud as dickens of them, so.
The last thing I want to say is, is, Chief, I, I don't know who chose to make Andy our captain, but whoever is, give him a raise.
With this budget, we approved his raise, yeah.
I'll tell the sheriff, how about that?
There you go. Thanks, Captain.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Mr. Hunsinger will tell you all about transportation.
Hello, Mayor Council. Not much changed between the two budgets for this, for the engineering budget, but for our accomplishments this year. Again, we had the PED plan. Unfortunately, I'm still waiting for DOT to finalize the review, but that should be shortly. So that was completed, transportation master plan was started. Now we'll go through in the next FY. Chestnut Parkway Phase Three began and of course the park project began. All right, what we're trying to do this, this coming year, that, that contract services lineup you see right there that's going up from fifty to one oh five, it's mainly because of these, these four items and a little bit more. But we've got that share cost that y'all agreed on with the critical intersection, which is like a four thousand dollars. And then our CRTPO annual membership is creeping up to about twenty grand a year. I think it was eighteen thousand last year. Bridge inspections, I don't have a good handle of what that's gonna cost, but I think we're gonna get hit with a, a fee this coming year on that. It's kind of weird, they, they do, if y'all don't know or not, the incident DOT does that for us and we've been doing that ever since. And we've got probably, I think, seven now, seven culverts slash bridges that are considered a bridge. So they, they basically are required to be inspected on a bi-annual basis. That's state law. So DOT is already doing that with their consultants, so it's easy for us to just piggyback. And so we've been doing that and get billed every two years. And so that's what that, that is. They give us a report and everything and we, you know, they, they let us know if something's wrong with them. Kruger Creek Wetland Study, I wanted to kind of give you a, a, update on this. What I'm wanting to do, and that's really up to y'all if you want to move forward with this, but I think it's a good idea, is the Army Corps Engineers have went out there and did a study on the soils out there at Kruger Creek Park. Because evidently those are the most unique soils in the state, at least in this area of the state. And I have not got the results of that study yet. But I'm, I'm betting that the soils are not as bad as what we got on our previous study several years ago. Because we did do a wetland study several years ago in this park and that's the reason why we're not building on that park. So my hope is, you know, that study that Corps is doing is not gonna allow us to say, okay, yeah, we can build here. We will still have to do a detailed wetland study to confirm it. But I'm hoping those results come back, that we can move forward that and that would be probably about seven thousand dollars to do that study. I think it's a good opportunity to do that because then maybe we'll get more land where we actually can expand Kruger Creek Park. It's just something to think about. And then the other cost, I'd like to try to, and I think I mentioned this last budget season, but we didn't really move forward on it, is try to do a preliminary survey of the area where we, we want to put the Price Mill Creek Greenway at. And that is a project that is in the holding tank at CRTPO and it's been there a while. But I'd like to go ahead and do preliminary surveys so I can at least start figuring out what it's gonna cost us to build a project, if the council wants to move forward with that. Again, that's, that's connecting to our Olewood Road Carolina Thread Trail, which if you remember correctly, Olewood Road, the ten-foot sidewalk is the Carolina Thread Trail through town of Indian Trail that would connect to that. And that is also part of the, that spine of the connection to the additional Carolina Thread Trail, which is Price Mill Creek. And then we have another section north going towards Kruger Creek Park. So, anyway, so that's the reason for that increase in contract services. And in advertising, we go through Duncan Parnell, our bedroom, and they have gone up on our costs every time we advertise for our contracts. It's went up, so that's why that increase is happening. Next slide. So again, normal stuff, salary stuff, but basically that's the only reason why that's went up between the two salaries is for those items. And I'll answer any questions.
Go ahead. Question for you.
Yeah.
We talked about so, parks and building and, do you have any problem with bull town?
Well, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure it's out there, especially because if you remember correctly, the bulk, the bulk of that property at the bottom is flood plain, you know? And so we actually are outside the flood plain, but unfortunately, the, the wetland study that was done years ago but unfortunately, the, the wetland study that was done years ago, put a lot of that property still in wetlands, even though it's out of the floodplain, and so we're hoping that, that'll change.
So do you, can you spread that off?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it, it can be bridged, I mean, again, it takes an effort of undercutting everything, that's what we had to do out here at this park, I mean, this park and this town hall is all farm land, old farm land, and it was nothing but two to three foot of dirt that was, you couldn't use. And so, yeah, you have to go in there and put forth an effort, try to bridge the dirt and get it compacted. Question, okay.
I got one more.
Yes.
On the, the wetlands detailed in parks.
Yeah.
Was it the Army Corps of Engineers that did the first study on the wetland?
No, no, it was a consultant we contracted with.
Okay, and so is it a different company that you're, you're?
It, it will be, but again, it'll, due to state law changing, plus this other study happening, I think we might get a better outcome.
So it's state laws that's going to help us out?
Well, that's true, yeah, that, they've changed the, the situation of, you basically don't have to consider it a wetland if you can justify the fact that the water coming up from the ground is not going directly, channelizing into, into the creek itself, which is, which is a good thing, because a lot of determinations in the years past, I mean, everything was a wet, considered a wetland based on just the soil properties they were hand augering out in the field, it's almost a judgment call. So this is, it's going to make it a little better.
Do you think that would be complete, the, the study?
The Army Corps has told me, I, I've been trying to get an answer, and I said, at least tell me it's going to be before the end of our fiscal year, which is June, obviously, and they said, yes, we'll have it by then. So I would, would hope I could start doing the study in July when the budget starts.
That's real interesting.
Yeah.
That could be a real added.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, I hope it changes things, because we got a lot of property over there we can't even use right now. Uh-huh. Any other questions? All right, thank you all.
All right, next up, Adam will talk about solid waste and facilities.
Good evening, everyone, so I'm back there frantically, frantically taking notes on what I was going to say, because I try and use technology, my iPad, and it failed me today, it deleted all my notes, and I didn't notice it till I was back there, so we'll see how well I do from memory here. So as we look and talk about solid waste in FY twenty-four, some things that y'all dealt with, as we had our first CPI increase on our existing contract, and we also, at the same time, had our first recycling tonnage increase per the contract as well, some positive things. It's already been mentioned, we hired a split position between solid waste and tax, and upfront, answering the phones, helping with all those solid waste calls that we do have that continue to come in. A couple of other things, as we look at FY twenty-five and the budget, we have received from Waste Connections, a CPI adjustment increase of actually five and a half percent, but per the contract, they aren't, they aren't allowed any more than five percent, and then a recycling increase of five point seven percent. We aren't a hundred percent on those numbers yet, we're still in negotiation and reviewing the numbers to see what the actual percentages will end up being, but that is what they have requested. We've done a lot of work this year, as Mike mentioned earlier, in trying to make the budget more transparent. We started that process last year with going to the budget software and going to the budget book the way it is now. But one thing we, we didn't do last year, and there was something that played a lot in all of our public works funds that we are in, we did not move all of our equipment and all of our materials and all of our staff into the right call center. So one thing you'll see as we go through these numbers over the next couple of slides, is we've done that this year. So you'll see some very large fluctuations in some of our budgets, but overall, they're relatively in line with where they would have been just off of general increases. We are looking, next year, when you're looking solid waste, at a budget of three, wow, three point four million for solid waste, that includes one and a half employees, the first time of doing a fifty-fifty cost share on yard waste carts with residents that want those. Our call volume continues to increase, this year, we've added roughly five hundred customers, or that's what we're on pace to do by July. We think that's going to slow down a little bit next year, but that'll put us at about sixteen thousand touch points that we have at one time being solid waste contract, or solid waste accounts. That increase between last year and this year is about nine point five percent. And then you see that number down there at the bottom, the green, which is the actual spent, it looks really, really low, you're saying, wow, you're way, you're in good shape, well, remember, that's only five months of data on that actual, so you can pull that up and see about where we'll be at at the end of the year. One thing to keep in mind as we continue to go forward, I know one of y'all's priorities was for public works staff and other town staff to look at solid waste, and to look at, do we ever want to look at bringing those services in-house, or what do we need to do with that? We are still looking at doing that and doing that study, but one thing to keep in mind and to remember is solid waste, right now, is continuing to cost more and more and more. It's roughly costing over thirty percent of the eighteen and a half cent tax rate, so thirty percent of that tax rate is going only to fund solid waste, and it's only going to get more expensive, it's not going in the other direction. So just as you continue to think through that process, and we give you more information, just remember, we may have to start looking at, as we talked about in the past, a couple of years ago, we did a study, do we need to look at other alternative revenues to help pay for some of these things? This may be one of those that you have to start looking at that, if eighteen and a half cents is where we want to keep the tax rate. So now, as we look and start looking and talking about public works, this is our general public works account, so under public works, obviously, there's a couple of different things, but this is general public works staff. Couple of things, last year, we added the right-of-way crew, thank y'all, it's already been talked about, I think they're doing a really good job. We've had several compliments, I'll, I'll say, one of the people last week, Mayor, I think you got a phone call from him, and he called me as well, Sidney Sandy reached out, and he said he doesn't drive very much anymore, but he was going to church on Easter Sunday, and he got to go down seventy-four, and it was the first time he had seen it since it had started being cut, and he really appreciated that y'all had taken those steps to put that crew into place.
Yeah, he did mention that to me.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, it looks unreal.
It's not the safest operation in the world, but they're, they're getting it done, Carrie winces every time I tell her that they're over there, so.
It is a lot better than the road, gee, I don't know, but I'm going to say that, it looks almost like somebody, it looks like someone's lawn.
So they're cutting the medians with zero-turn mowers and weed-eating everything, and then we're cutting the shoulders with the tractor. So, yes, thank you. So some of our accomplishments in twenty-four, but as we look more towards twenty-five, again, trying to increase that greater transparency, we've moved out of this budget, which is what you'll see in just a second, a lot of things that actually are in our facilities budget, so those are things related to equipment, those are things related to the materials that they use to maintain the park, it's the materials that are used in this building to maintain things, all that's been moved out of this budget, and including the staff has now been moved out of this budget, it's now in the facilities budget. And then you, we have in this year's budget also the second half of the ADA plan, Abby mentioned that earlier, you know, she's doing a portion of that on the website, Carrie and I are actively working on doing the facilities and town streets side of things. So as we look at this budget for what our numbers are looking like, so this budget, it's down forty-one percent in public works, but again, remember, most of that moved into other budgets, being the facilities budget, which we'll talk about in just a second, that fourteen people are encompassed in the public works budget right now. Some major things that have moved and, okay, moved and gone around, is streetlights are continuing to go up, so we had about a seventy thousand dollar a year increase from Union Power, and we've been told that Duke Energy can go up as much as twenty-five percent in this next fiscal year on their costs. They were given that ability by the Utilities Commission up in Raleigh. There's some other, also adding a new team member for that right-of-way crew, remember when we made that presentation, we were going to do three people in year one, which is the year we're sitting in, and we were going to add that fourth person to be a four-man team like all of our other crews. And the budget is also split over all of them, is some very small adjustments, potentially, for some employees for some increases in responsibilities that they've gotten over time. Bunch of equipment, bunch of different things for them to continue to do their jobs, you can see there on the side, the, the little bar, or the little pie graph and the percentages where that's split out at. So now, as we talk about facilities, this year, we started that new janitorial contract, I know that was a big deal, we, we walked through and explained how that process was going to work, we replaced some town vehicles, and then we've also increased some of our, our maintenance levels at different facilities. As we're looking future, looking in twenty-five, the budget that you have in front of you, we're going to continue the town's vehicle replacement policy, funding the Christmas lights over at the park. I know last year, we kind of upgraded that from what we've done in the past, and we went out and did that as a contract, and again, increasing that transparency and being able to, to actually see where funds are being spent. But you can see that major increase there, that's what we were talking about, so that's a forty-eight percent increase, but if you think about, public works went down forty-one percent, this one went up forty-eight percent, we're, we're kind of on that flat line as we're looking at that. What is included in this budget this year actually does have some pretty big costs that we need to do at a couple of different facilities, one of those is we have a very large repair that we need to make at the ADA playground at the park, the pad has failed that that park sits on, the, the cushion pad, if you've ever been over there, so we need to rip that out and repair that. We want to run power to all the shelters at the parks, so we've added shelters over the years, but we haven't added power to those shelters as we've added them, that's one of the major things that Hayden and them get requests for, is when somebody rents a shelter, is, is there power there? Is there a way I can run, you know, a, a music machine, or I can run, you know, any number of things, you know, that they want to run, they can't do that right now at a lot of our shelters, so that's incorporated in this. And also, two large upgrades here in Town Hall, one is a security upgrade, and one is turning the medium community room into additional offices, because we are out of office space in the building right now. There are nine employees, or there will be nine employees, if the fourth right-of-way crew member is added in this budget. The last one I'll talk about right now while I'm up here is operating capital, this year, it's pretty easy, operating capital is only the EV grant, if you remember, we were awarded a second EV grant from CRTPO. We are now going to lump our two projects together, the one that we got in the previous year, and the one that we will be awarded in October, or get the funds for in October, lump them as one, but this year, the operating capital only has a forty-one thousand dollar match, and that is due to that EV grant. And I'll pause there and answer any questions, I can go back to any of them.
I have a question, I remember a year or two ago, you gave a presentation about recyclable materials, and you said it's going up five point seven percent, so if I understood you correctly, basically, everything that we think we're recycling is basically being contaminated, so we're being charged to discharge of that?
Uh, almost, so we, it cost us, with this increase, it'll cost us about a hundred and, round numbers, two hundred and one dollars per ton to recycle material, and it'll cost us thirty-eight dollars per ton to throw it in the landfill. So it's not the contaminant level, what it is, is the refinery where the material is taken, it's what they charge Waste Connections to take the material there. So the way our contract was written is we had a floor, we had a base rate that they were willing to absorb, hundred and eighty-five dollars, if I remember right, and in two, well, three years with this adjustment, it's gone from eighty, one eighty-five to two oh one. They were responsible for the first ten percent, we're responsible for every percent over ten percent for the life of the contract, even if it quadrupled, we would be responsible for that.
I think about that every recycle day at my house, I go through the trash can trying to get out.
So one of the things that, and I didn't, didn't say it, it's on the slide, that we're going to continue to try and create more touch points with the public on, you know, education, with staff, with public, with students, you know, Hayden and them, when they have events going on here in the building, you know, we did one last year with, with staff on Public Works Week, but Abby does a really good job of, her and Lori work really well, you know, with any information, they try and get it out to the public as quick as we can. Every month, we try and have something related to trash or recycling.
You know, touch a truck or something like that, when we have a big event, might be a good idea as well.
Yes, sir.
Great, didn't our biggest customer for recyclables was China, wasn't it?
Yes.
The economy, in the basement, they just don't pay any more than we're.
Yeah, they, they don't take very much recyclables from the US anymore as a whole.
I, um, excuse me, Adam, we're completely out of office space here.
In the building, yes, there is not, well, I, with the addition of the town manager, or assistant town manager position that's in the budget, yes, we will be a hundred percent out of office space in the building.
Have we considered cubicles?
Yes, so part of the plan that we have done over the last couple of years is we have worked with a external consultant to look at different designs and different ideas, be it cubicles, be it adding actual, like, brick offices, if you want to say, wood offices.
For instance, we have a conference room for planning department, engineering, right over here, whatever, administrative staff, what have you. Have we thought about converting any of those and having maybe two conference rooms in the building?
Yes, so we, we've looked at all of those options, and some of those are still being looked at, and we're, we're trying to figure out, what happens is, is when you try and create a space for people to be able to, like, you know, put all of your, your department together, you need more than one officer, you know, so some of the conference rooms are big enough maybe to fit two cubicles in, but you couldn't put two office, so it, it gets kind of, yes, we are looking at what you're asking.
Thank you, okay. Money towards a public works facility in the future, is that part of this, are we going to, is that going to be something later? As far as going to be discussed?
So that is, that is not in this budget, so that would be something we would have to figure out in the future. So we do still have the process that y'all had said that you were going to do, that this year will be the last two million dollars that will be moved, once the audit is done for FY twenty-four, that'll put that fund at six point five million plus the interest that's been earned over the life of that two and a half, three-year plan.
We're not adding any money in this budget.
No, sir.
Okay, so we're going to leave it at the six million for now?
Yes, and then we would, we would come back with a budget amendment or something like, you know, Jim and them would, if, if we got to that level.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add to your question?
Yes, sir.
We've got several projects outside of this budget that the council's going to need to sit around and roundtable separate and apart to figure out, how do we want to pay for it? We know that the public works is one of those, some of our street projects, I think, that Mr. Hunzinger will be talking about is another, and so even after we approve this budget, probably in the summertime, maybe, is we just need to have some workshops where we put this on the board and begin to work through that.
That's more of the capital side of the budget, not the general operating.
I got one more thing for you, our trash service is thirty percent of our, our tax rate, eighteen point five percent. Did you imply?
It's a little bit more than thirty, but thirty's around, I talk in very round numbers, it's a lot easier for me to remember.
Were there an implication of, perhaps, we might need to look at increasing tax rate in Indian Trail?
All I am saying is, we'll have to look at different ways to fund that, so.
Right, I get it, but, you know, but with the citizens, you know, paying three point seven percent more property tax, eight point eight percent vehicle tax, you know, it's just really scary, Jim, I don't know how you can manage all that. I don't know how you can manage all that, you know, without taxing the citizen to death.
So that, I mean, there are other ways to do it. You know, one of those that we brought up a couple of years ago was, you know, they do allow, there is a general statute that allows you to, it's a solid waste fee. So think of it kind of the way that the stormwater fee works. It's, you have the service, so you can't make money on the fund, but you can use it to operate that fund.
Yeah, I remember when I first moved to Indian Trail, I believe, I might be wrong on the number, but I remember that we had like a $5 a month fee or something like that. Do you remember that?
So, yeah, we, the town used to, I think it was quarterly, I thought it was $15.
Yeah, I can remember exactly. I knew it wasn't a significant amount over the course of the year. It was like 60 bucks, I believe.
Yep.
Mr. Amburgi, several years ago, we engaged UNC Charlotte that did a survey of other cities that looked at vehicle tax and landfill tax. So that if the day does come where the council says 18 and a half cent is very important, we want to look at some other buckets of money, we'll have that information, we can update it and then put that out to you.
Can you add a question?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned $201 for recycling.
Yes.
And you said it's $8 a ton.
So $201 is the ton, is how much it costs per ton to do recycling. To do a ton of solid waste is $38 a ton to process it.
How much of the recycled, do you think goes in the landfill?
I hope zero.
How much do you really?
I hope zero. I don't really know. I know that at our facility, where at the transfer station, every ton that goes across the scale makes it to Greensboro where it's being processed. What happens to it once it gets to Greensboro, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if you, if the council would like, we'll go ahead and continue the budget workshop. When we're done with that, we'll take a five minute break and then we'll start our business meeting if that works for everyone. Okay. I think next up is Brandy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to be super quick for the sake of time. Hannah, okay. Thank you. All right, so for planning code enforcement and economic development, we are all staying flat minus the costs that we really don't control. So there is a tiny bit increase, but nothing, nothing that we're asking for this year in particular. So what we want to do is just talk a little bit about our accomplishments. Planning, we issued 574 permits. We also added Matrix to our development projects page. So if you've not visited that page, we have had multiple municipalities reach out from other counties within the county here as well, saying, can you show us how you did that? So it's been very, very successful. In fact, we have 3,500 views in the last six months. That averages about 19 per day. And we continue to look for ways to be efficient, utilize the same staff, but do more work. And this is a good example of it. That may be, you know, 19 calls that we had to take that day that we've eliminated, and we can, we can do some other things instead. So we're excited about that. This just shows you that there's very little change in planning. Then my favorite subject, I started out as a code enforcement officer, and one of the most valuable things that I think that code enforcement can do is remove unsightly buildings. It helps economic development, health and safety. And so we, we were a part of removing 12 substandard structures. Only three of those did the town remove. So others were moved by, were removed by the property owner or developers. So that's, that's significant. Again, here's a comparison where there's very little change. And then economic development. So we had 31 commercial light industrial projects. Our most significant, of course, being Duke Energy's main operations center, which we'll hear a little bit more about in our regular meeting tonight. That's all I have for you unless you have any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Brandy.
What's that?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add two quick things. Adam's got the Forrester in his budget. This year went up a little bit. We got the number from Union County. And Brandy has the 74X bus in her budget. So they're both budgeted.
All right. I think next up is a parking wreck.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to be before you this evening. I'll follow the trend of quick and simple and answer any questions you may have. So following what we've done, looking at some 24 fiscal year accomplishments, we welcomed a couple of new staff. One was welcomed, you know, because it was a half budgeted position. So Kedron is our new parking wreck specialist, a great addition to the team. And then we also hired a new athletic coordinator when, when our former athletic coordinator became a stay at home father. Overall, we've increased customer service from what we have for full time staff and part time staff. That's been able to increase rentals, increase programs, increase events across the board. We've been using space a little differently. So via ARPA dollars, we now have gained access to the VFW, hosted a couple of events there, a couple coming up. So for example, our breakfast with Bunny, we saw an increase of 84% across the board. So again, continuing to serve more as we see and interact with some new folks. As Jim touched on, our revenues are up. A lot of this is again, because of what staff is continuing to do, as well as securing some new and additional sponsorship. And ultimately, we just continue to provide for the community, which is, I think frankly, the best part of our jobs. Some fiscal year 25 highlights, you do see an increase. Some of this comes as expected. Again, that parking wreck specialist position that was funded at half year is obviously a full year position now. We did increase our part time staff as well. Part of that is last year, we hosted about 25 tournaments out at the fields. This year, we're about 35. So it takes some more manpower, but we're also increasing our revenue on that side. Overall, on the operations side of the budget, again, this is with personnel subtracted out, we're about just under 5%, about $44,000. We pinch pennies where we can. So some things came down, whether it be from Mayor Tree or a couple of the different events across the board. Doesn't mean that we're not doing this, it's just now we have some more historical lines of data and we're able to scrimp where we can. Some things that saw increases, obviously with a bigger staff, we have more training. We also have a younger staff, so making sure that, you know, they're going to conferences and having that ability to network is very important. Some increases across the board, just event wise, again, continue to go up, but feel it's a necessity. So this is what we see for our FY request. So any questions that y'all may have? Awesome, have a great night.
One question. How, how busy are the parks? How are we on, on space?
Busier than we've ever been. So for example, you know, looking at Cricket Creek Park, we, you know, on a specific field, we could go from 3:30 in the afternoon hosting a, you know, middle school, high school team all the way till 10:30 at night, you know. So if we had more fields, we would book out more fields. If we had more space, we'd book out more things. For example, our summer camps right now max out around 15. There's a current waitlist of 20, you know. So that means if we had space for 35 for a week, we could host them. We just don't have that space currently.
Well, and I will say this, I've been blessed with grandchildren, five of them. And I see how busy our parks are. I see how busy Carolina Quartz is. I see all of it. But I also see what they are in Cornelius, and I see what they are in Pineville, and I see, and there's nothing better than to go to a park on a weekend, and I do almost every weekend, and see, you can't find a parking place. Because there is a lot going on with kids and parks, and I can't think of a better place or a better thing to do than to be in a park with a kid, whether it's you're fishing or whether you're playing softball, or whether you're playing baseball, or whether you're playing flag football, all that's happening right now. And I commend the parks for everything that y'all do with the staff that you do is tremendous. And keep up the good work, and let's keep working on, on making Indian Trail the town for parks and town for, for raising your kids and being a great place to live. And I appreciate what you're saying.
Absolutely, I appreciate, you know, tying back into our mission and vision, our, one of our goals is to create memories, you know. So it's more than just throwing a football around, but it's the memory for the grandfather, it's the memory for the eight year old, it's the memory for the mom or the dad, you know. So I think that's something that we do very well out in the department. So appreciate your time for us. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, our next speaker is Todd Hunsinger. We'll talk about Powellville Stormwater. Captain Mullis says he has no more comments. Mr. Hunsinger will continue with the current capital project. Jim has already talked about debt service, and Adam will talk about ARPA.
All right, so Powellville will be very quick. Again, we took pretty much majority of the staff and everything out of Powellville, and now it's just strictly for the resurfacing. So this, the accomplishments, sorry, can't talk. Basically, we're trying to hear that five year plan, and you'll see that in just a second. And then, of course, we were doing, again, the annual resurfacing contract every year. And then next year, again, we continue to move forward with that plan, try to increase that PCR, PCR rating. And then basically, this spreadsheet just gives you a breakdown of how we're getting to that $2 million mark for that plan. All right, then the plan, you've seen this spreadsheet before, but I wanted to show it one more time. Again, right now, we are technically at doing, starting this plan right now. So the advertiser for that project is the first one you see, the 2324. So that $3 million contract is just now starting. The research we're doing right now is not part of this plan, that was previous. So we're getting off to a good start. And like I've told you before, you know, we booked a five year plan, but I really think, I have high confidence that within two to three years, I think we'll be at what we need to be, and we don't need to follow this plan all the way through. But I can't, I'm not going to say confidently we can do that yet, but I have, I have good feelings for it. All right, any questions about the Powellville? Again, it's not changing, it's $2 million 55. All right, moving on. All right, Stormwater. I will say this, I didn't mention this in the engineering, but of course, we share our salaries, both Stormwater Engineering is, we did hire an engineer technician, his name's Austin. He's been here for a few months, and he's doing well. But just wanted to let you know, and of course, like Kerry said, we're actively looking to replace Adrian, who left, left us about a couple of weeks ago. All right, so right in front of you is just a breakdown of the budget itself, with line items. And so basically, revenue went up, you see the second line up to the top from 1.5 to 1.6. Interest is just, again, 1,500, and then funds, fund balance appropriated. And then you've come to the bottom line, which is 2.8. So we are actually going down a little bit this year, and I'll tell you why. So accomplishments, basically, we finished out Phase Two, First Avenue, as y'all know. We actually finished, just finished ARPA Stormwater Phase One projects. And that was the Popper Glen, that was a few culvert crossings that we needed to replace so we could start resurfacing that street. That has just got done like a couple of weeks ago. And then we've actually started the design on our Phase Two. And again, our Phase Two is unfortunately going to be costly. So we are have, we have ARPA funds to finance that to a certain point, which is around 1.3 million. But I feel like it's going to be double that. So that's why you see the 1.4 in the spreadsheet under capital outlay. That's what's going to cover that additional money we need to file, finish out that Phase Two project. And we'll talk about that at the Stormwater Committee on Thursday as well. All right, so that's the reason why that's, technically went down, the 1.8 was with the First Avenue Phase Two and a couple of other things. And so we don't need that as much this year, so it went down a little bit. Contract services has went down because if you remember, since we've added staff in Public Works, they are actually going to start doing the creek cleaning, so we don't have to do a contract for that anymore. And so that's went down from 294 to 100,000. And then equipment, I'll have Adam come up and talk about that real quick.
Sure, so y'all probably know and have realized over the years, so Stormwater is one of those funds that's split between multiple departments. So Public Works uses a portion of Stormwater to do the work that we do. Todd uses it for the work that they do. Equipment, a lot of that equipment goes towards Public Works. The biggest item in that equipment that you see this year is the purchase of a street sweeper. So we are in the middle of street sweeping right now. We sweep once a year. That barely meets our requirement for our MPDS permit, that we have to sweep at a minimum once a year. Couple of years ago, we used to have it done by contract. Then we couldn't find a contractor that would come do it for us once a year. So then we started renting the piece of equipment, and we were doing it ourselves, which is what we're still doing today. But this year, we have tried to rent a piece of equipment all the way back since October, and we were just given that piece of equipment to be able to rent two weeks ago. So it's becoming more and more and more difficult to get that piece of equipment. That piece of equipment alone is $400,000. So when you look at 156 and 741, one piece of equipment of that is 250% of that increase. The other portion of that is for some of our equipment in the past, we have always used a 6040 split, 60% general fund, 40% stormwater. What we did this year for a couple of pieces of equipment is we flipped that due to the use of where they would be used at, with now having, as Todd mentioned, that right of way crew doing the stormwater work. We're going to pay 60%, or we're proposing to pay 60% of that equipment with stormwater funds and 40% with general fund. So that's, that's where that increase looks very large, but that's where it's made up with.
Adam, so you're saying you purchased a sweep cleaner?
We would, we would put, if, if the budget passes, we would purchase one in next fiscal year.
And how often would you sweep?
So at that point, we could sweep anytime we wanted to. Whenever we have somebody that's a CDL driver, we could sweep. We're actually going to try something for the first time this year. Next week or the week after, you will actually see the street sweeper go down 74. We are going to sweep the curb lines on 74. We've never done it, so that'll be interesting. But it needs it really bad, so.
Mr. Amburgi, also with the street sweeper, if we need to sweep, like the parks across the street or stuff like that?
After a parade, you know, we get a lot of requests Hayden does, like, you know, there's litter, candy wrapper, things like that. We can run down the street and turn around and come back and be done. Where right now, we don't have that ability. So, yep.
All right, so besides buying, buying several pieces of equipment, the other highlights again is to try to move forward with the ARPA Phase Two project. We will try to start pursuing funding grants once we get our watershed master plan approved by the EPA. And then we're going to just continue to move forward doing stream restoration projects. And then, of course, identify future CIPs, which we'll start talking about at Stormwater Committee on Thursday. All right, yeah. And so again, it did come down, and obviously for those reasons, we don't need as much in the CIP, and we don't need as much in our contract services. All right, any questions about Stormwater? All right. So capital improvement projects. All right, you've seen this spreadsheet many times. I won't go over it, but basically, I cleaned it up just a little bit, but, because we did have some CIP ordinances changed, so it was updated, but the number really didn't change that much. See on the bottom right corner, you have transportation projects at around, I can't see that number. What is that, 38?
30,000.
And what's that?
30,000.
30,000, 30 million? All right, so 30 million, then I think about 14 in a non-transportation project. So you're at 44 million right now of CIP projects. And again, not, not all of these are fully funded on this spreadsheet. You've got the Public Works facility, it's not fully funded. And you have the complete street Phase Two, it's not fully funded, that we'll talk about in just a second. All right, so additional funding, we are asking for in our, some of our projects. So of course, we have the annual 1 million on Omera Road. Well, we also have betterments that we have to consider. Now, the good thing is, we don't really need to budget betterment. Now, the good thing is, we don't really need to budget betterments this coming FY, because the Chestnut Connector betterments, and when I say betterments, it's on the actual DOT portion of the Chestnut Connector, we are not going to be billed till after that project is done, of course, that project's going to take two years, so, but I want to let you know that that is the number that you're going to, you're going to get with the agreement, is $258,000 in betterments, and that is for sidewalks, and that is for mast arm poles, and then the betterments of that is, we won't, we also, we want those painted black, we don't want the silver mast arms, because we want it to match our complete street project. So again, that's not a big cost, the paint itself's not a big cost, but the mast arms are obviously, so that's why that's 258,000, again, that won't happen, but I wanted to give you the number, and I've been working with DOT on the Monroe Road, and right now, it's, it's basically an estimate, rough estimate, but I'm thinking it's going to be about a half a million, but again, that won't have to be paid for several years, because they're not starting that project anytime soon. I think at recent conversations with DOT, it's still shooting a bid, let day to January As far as complete street Phase One, staff has internally been talking with vendors because of trying to select a street light that we would like, we don't want the standard Duke Energy Street Light out there, again, it is our downtown, we want this to be a unique project, we're billing it to a different standard in the state to make it more of a unique project, so we have looked at a vendor, and right now, the number is 550,000 for that, for street lights. Adventures is basically your, your park benches, your trash receptacles, again, you're going to have to have those every once in a while along that corridor for folks that are walking, again, we're trying to promote pedestrian walking in the downtown, and so the 55,000 is for that, and then the sign relocation, we have discussed, I'm estimating of the 10, 11 signs we have to relocate, we're going to need an additional 200,000 for that. All right, any questions on the, those numbers? Yes?
Yeah, real quick, are you suggesting that we go ahead and budget these items, and that way we'll have them paid off before the project's completed?
I, I, no, I would, my suggestion is, is the update of CIP ordinance to, yes, to pay for these items in the future when we need it. And, and then we can go in more detail, I'm sorry, we can go in more detail about the street lights and amenities, but I wanted to give you the numbers right now, so that way you're, you know it's coming, go ahead.
So approving the CPA ordinance is different than approving the budget?
I'm going to let Jim answer that question, Jim.
So it's different?
No, once you approve the budget, then the CIP ordinance will be automatically updated, but we still have to come to council to say you approved it, but it's just changed the ordinance if you approve the budget, with these numbers in.
Okay, so when are we going to see what we're paying for the betterments, because I've never seen what the betterments are going to be on Old Monroe Road.
Well, the betterments are not going to have, be happening this FY, this coming FY, so I'm not in a hurry to give you that detail, because I don't have all the detail from DOT yet.
But you want me to pay for it before I see what I'm paying for?
No, I want you to pay for the Indian Truck Complete Street portion of the spreadsheet, not the Chestnut or Old Monroe Road portion, that's why there's stars beside the numbers.
So there's Old Monroe Road, we're not funding that now then, correct?
You're fun, you're funding Old Monroe, but the 1 million you're annually putting into it, you've already put 3 million in.
Well, I'm talking about the betterments, I'm sorry, the half million, I was.
You're not doing that right now, no, but I wanted to let you know that's going to be the number in the future for that, for whatever future council, because y'all, some of y'all are still going to be on the council when that comes to it.
We're just giving you a look ahead beyond 2425, as it relates to Chestnut Connector and Old Monroe Road.
Okay, so, all right, I should clarify, the double stars mean that we're not funding this budget?
Correct, correct.
Okay, clarify that.
Yeah, no, no, not a problem. All right, any other questions about those items? All right, yeah.
How many more payments we got on Old Monroe Road, just two?
Yeah.
This year or next year, we're done? Okay.
I just want to get a clarification.
Okay, no problem.
Are you asking for the betterments to be, go ahead, to go ahead and budget these, and that way we'd have them paid off before? Okay, thank you.
All right, so in doing that, the next, this spreadsheet's basically the Phase One again, just want to let you know, okay, the existing funding sources, that's all in your CIP ordinance right now for design, I just recently found out today, there may be a slight additional surveying that needs to have happened, again, be a few thousand dollars, not much, but I don't have that number. Right-of-way acquisition, again, we're actively being right-of-way, I know, I suspect it'll go up a little bit than that, but I don't have a number for you at this time, and then construction, we're still actively working with some utilities, trying to get estimates from them, and so I'm not, not confident that it's going to stay underneath that number as of right now, but I will let y'all know as time moves on. Street scape, again, we just talked about, we only have a $50,000 grant right now, it's a rural grant that we got several years ago, and they have allowed us to keep re-upping it, so we have 50,000 that will cover those costs, but those three calls that was on the previous slide adds up to 818, so we would be on the hook for 768,000, if y'all so choose to. All right, let's talk about Phase Two, Indian Truck Complete Street, I've been working on trying to get a FROF cost of what that would cost a town, so this is what the FROF numbers are right now, so you got right-of-way acquisition at around a million dollars, you got construction at 7 million, which is pretty, pretty close to what you're going to be paying for on the Phase One, on just the construction part, not, not the Duke Energy Underground, but the construction part, it's about the same number, and then street lights, if we go with the same vendor and continue on the street lights, it's an additional, because again, it's a longer corridor, so obviously, it's going to be more than what the Phase One cost was. So if you break that down, right now, the CIP ordinance only has design in, 720,000. You have taken, you've earmarked 2 million off of the state grant, to put in that, that's not in it right now, but that's what you've kind of suggested, so if you, if that goes into the ordinance eventually, then you're looking at 1 million still for right-of-way, because you don't have that in CIP yet, you have 5 million to cover the construction, and then 650, so you're at 6.6 and a half. Any questions about those numbers?
Let me, let me, if I may, Todd, just kind of clarify, because a question was asked about funding of these roads and things like that, this is not part of the general fund, so you're not pushing your July 1 deadline that you would with your general fund, so this is one of the things we want to, we want to talk about, when we talk about these projects and what our strategies are to fund those, and we, when we do update our capital budget, those costs and revenues will be included.
And, and so, just to go back to Phase One real quick, as you, as you recall, we have additional funds that are helping that project out, private, private development improvements and your, and your grants, well, right now, you, you, right now, you're not paying anything on that project, so anything extra you, I'm talking about today is, is what you would be paying extra, as far as a town's concerned, everything else has been, except for the design, is, is, is covered right now, just FY. All right, thank y'all.
Jim says he's already talked about debt service, so would y'all like to hear from Adam, who is our last speaker, to talk about ARPA?
Not really, no.
Wait, pointing at me?
No, a question on debt service, can I have a question, please?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, is that okay? You're running the meeting.
Go ahead, go ahead, Jim.
When you say 1.8 million is our debt service, how much do we get on the half percent towards that goes, is that 1.8 also?
Say that again, Todd.
When we designate half of, half of the, 0.5 of the 18.5 to go to debt service, how much money is that?
It's on the penny chart, I believe, let's see.
Is that equal to what we have in debt service, or, I don't know how that?
Not sure if I understand the question completely, I mean, our debt service this year is 1.9, it's going down to 185, so we're about $41,000 less this year.
So we collect that much?
How much is a penny, Jim? How much is one penny?
One penny, and the tax rate's about 620,000.
That'd be about half of that, right?
Right, okay, yeah, that was my question, yeah, yeah, he knew what I'm talking about.
You got it, yeah, I didn't follow, okay, but yeah, good question, but yeah, our debt service is in good shape, Mike always likes to know when the next one is falling off, and that'd be 2028, unless we pay something early, and so we like to time that, maybe our next borrowing, when that falls off, if we can do that, but.
Can I ask some other questions about?
Sure.
The, yeah, Valoryum was up like 400,000, sales tax up like 350, investments up like over 600, but we're showing a total revenue of last year, 28, and we're down to 24 total revenue this year, but you've adjusted that on the expenses from 28 to 24 also, can you kind of explain how we went 4 million less?
That doesn't sound right, Todd, our, our revenues are up about 2 mil, over 2 million, this budget to last budget. Revenue's up about 11%.
Yeah, right here.
Okay, Jim.
You know, 20, 24 amended budget, total expenditure's 28, this year requested 24.
That's the amended budget.
Same, that's just, there's a, you know, from last year to this year, it's 4 million dollar difference.
Yeah, but you're in a different column, Todd, you want to go to the third column in, so we're comparing to the adopted budget of 24, which is 21.8, comparing that to the 24.
Right here.
Yeah.
See where it goes from 28 to 24 at the bottom? Okay, so I just wondered with the amended, so you're actually, so actually, you're really going from 21 to 24. So that's where that comes from, there are put all that, that was my question, where that came from, thank you.
Good question.
That's it, yeah, hey, answer my question, thank you.
All right, would y'all like to hear from Mr. McLamb now?
All right, so we can make this as short or as long as y'all want to, depending on how much information y'all want to give while we go through it. So let's just talk about ARPA in general, 12.7 million is what the town was awarded. Of that 12.7, through council, through council's direction, staff recommended, we use the 10 million dollars for revenue replacement, right, so we pulled that down, council then reinvested that back into the community in a number of projects, council then chose to go a step further and reinvest the interest income back into the community, so when you add all that up, ARPA has enabled, has enabled y'all as the council and for staff to put money back into the community of almost a little over 23 million dollars, so whether that's paying for the sheriff's office contract, whether that's doing a Stormwater project, whether that you're going to hear from two agencies here in a few minutes, when the meetings start, the council meeting starts, that's items that you were able to give to the community to be able to better, you know, somebody's life or fund somebody that needed a, something new, you know, for their business or something, so just keep that in mind when we talk through this, like, that's what the investment has been back into the community. So through FY '23 and FY '24, out of the 12.7, if we go back and we talk about that, you've obligated 9.4 million, almost 9.5 million, there's 1.9 million left that will fund a portion of the sheriff's office request this year, that money will then be able to roll in to projects, which we can talk about in a second, the rest of that 12.7, so when you take 9.4 plus 1.9, 1.3, gets you to 12.7, that 1.3 is those Stormwater projects that Todd talked about just a few minutes ago, that they're in the middle of designing, that'll fund a portion of that over 3 million dollars for those seven-plus projects. Keep in mind, ARPA committee is pushing Todd very hard right now, we have to have those funds obligated before December 31 of this calendar year, that deadline is going to come very quickly, so we are actively pushing him to get those design projects done, so he can get them bid, so that they can get going, at least we can encumber the funds. So now let's talk about that replacement lost revenue, that FY '25 funds that we were talking about. So 1.9 million is made up of those top two numbers you see there, that's that 1.8, that 1.182,000 and the 1.8 million, the interest income, which is that funds that we are going to reinvest back into the community, is that bottom 250,000. Let's talk about those top two for a second, so the top one, council originally, year and a half ago, almost two years ago now, had kind of thought about, let's do those as transportation projects. As you've seen going through the budget right now, y'all have invested a lot in transportation over the last couple of years, you've heard the last couple of meetings, how the PCR ratings come way up on some of our town streets, there's the potential, you can use those funds for anything that you want to that are a town-related function, is council still wanting to move in that direction, or does council maybe want to take some of that 1.8 million and move it towards the community center to start getting closer to fully funding that project, or does council want to move it to, we just got word yesterday, this morning, Mike, I don't know, about, from Union County, that they're hoping that they are going to get the Moore Park Waterline project in their capital project, that'll be their capital project ordinance that would be approved July 1, or go, their budget would go into place July 1. Our portion of that, if you remember, if we fund full construction, at the time, we thought it was a million-dollar project, I'm going to bump that a little bit, where a year later, let's say now it's 1.1, 1.2 million, so maybe we're on the, if we want to be on the hook for half of that, which would be 600,000. So there's ideas that we can come up with, different things you could fund, maybe other than just transportation, if it was council's direction. The last one there, you see 182,000, so originally, we had allotted, or you had allotted a half a million dollars to the Union County Sheriff's Facility, which is the facility that we share right now with the sheriff's office, I say "we" meaning Public Works, that money was to be used when we were out of the building from a public works standpoint, it was meant to be to upgrade the warehouse area into offices, we're not going to be out of there by December, I mean, it's just, it's not going to happen, so we need to look at potentially reallocating those funds to something else. We do have in this current FY '24 ARPA side of things, 182,000 that can be spent over there, we know some things that need to be done, HVAC units, some painting, some wood trim needs to be fixed, some other, you know, things, we can get close to that number, but we're still not even probably at that number, so we need to look at reallocating some of those funds to somewhere else, it's a town facility, it's a town-owned building, we're always going to do the work that needs to be there, whether it's with these funds or it's other funds, Andy and them don't need to worry about the building not being taken care of, it would be taken care of. So I'm open to talking about what you think you may want those projects to be right now, or you can just take the information and go, okay, we need to do something about it. Ideas on either one of them?
I think we need to take the information later on.
Okay.
Well, I kind of like to wait and see what the county does on the more water thing, you know, too, yeah, I mean, or, or we could go ahead and allocate the money that way.
We're not going to be able to wait all the way till they do it, because we're going to need to be moving at the same pace they are, but we can, we can come back at the next meeting and just say, okay, this is, if they did it, we would do X, if they don't do it, we would do Y.
Well, what, what they told us today was, it was presented to the county commission, if they vote on it, it would go into effect July 1, and then the county commission would have to make a decision if they wanted to partner with us on that.
All right, so what we can do is, we can bring back a few recommendations, a few different things, and then let council make their decisions on that, but at least now you kind of know where, where the thought process is at. So now let's talk about that bottom number there, that was that estimated 250,000 of interest income coming off of those projects, so right now, we are in an active call for projects, call for projects ends on Friday, to date, we were, we just received one while I was sitting here in this meeting, so we're roughly. so we're roughly at six or seven projects that we've been submitted. I know we'll get more than that, usually they roll in right at the last, you know, at the last date. So we'll be looking to get those projects in. We would then review those as the ARPA committee and bring those back to you, um, sometime in May-ish for y'all to make a decision. Those projects would then be awarded when the budget started in July, and then we would have to work to encumber all of those funds. We would be very busy between here and December to get all those, all that 250,000 encumbered before then. Good? Good? See head nods?
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
I know it has, it's, it's got to be obligated by December the 31st.
Yes.
Is there a, is there a time that it has to be completed by?
Yes. So funds have to be obligated by December 31st of 2024 and spent by December 31st of 2026.
Okay.
So you have a two-year window.
I knew it was a, I'd forgotten the date.
So that, that's where Todd's project, the stormwater projects, we've got to get some bit of the project done before this year, and then construction can take a year or two years, but we've at least got to know the project.
Does it have to be completed or just started?
Uh, completed. Completed, last invoice, walked off the job, everything has to be done.
At that point, the money's gone, I mean, you don't get it.
Money's gone and you can't even, you can't even use it anymore. Like it literally would vanish into thin air. Uh, we'd have to give it back, but thin air.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay, council, at the start of the meeting, we talked about, at the conclusion of this presentation, we've given you a lot of information, and we identified three, we need your direction. Either if you want to have a second budget workshop, we can schedule it, we would just need to know what topics you would like to talk about, or if you're relatively pleased with what you've heard and you want us to continue down this path, we can do that. The third option is, if some of you would like to sit down with some of the staff saying, hey, I need a little bit more information about this, um, we're certainly able to do that. So Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it to you to see how your fellow council members would like to proceed.
Any other questions, council? I'd, I'd like to thank the, the staff, I think you do a wonderful job, and I appreciate everything that you do, and, uh, I think you're very knowledgeable and very helpful, and we're very lucky to have you, and thank you for what you've done, and thank you for what you're doing, um, for us. And, uh, with that being said, if nothing, nobody's had anything else, let's adjourn this meeting, take five minutes.
You want to answer right?
I just need to get some direction. Do y'all want us to keep trekking along this track that we're going?
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that, because I think that we can ask questions if we need to.
What?
I think we should just keep following the path we're going.
In, in other words, we'll continue to work on the budget. If you have questions in the meantime, would like to meet with us, we're available. As we, as we get closer to that May timeframe, any significant changes, we'll let y'all know about it. We'll get the budget to you, we'll do the presentation on the 14th.
Mike, well, we have another meeting before you present to the committee?
Well, that, that was my question. If you'd like, we don't have another business meeting or workshop scheduled unless y'all would like us to.
I think we should, um, schedule another workshop, um, before then, that way we're all together, instead of meeting individually, in case someone asks a question that, uh, you know, to elaborate on, that's my opinion.
Okay.
Well, I tell you what, we don't have to make that decision right now, why don't, why don't we think about it and talk about it and...
Yes, sir. I didn't hear what he said, but I think, you know, we set up personal meetings and then we can always decide if we want another workshop. That's what you said.
I agree pretty much well, yeah, right.
Yeah, okay, I agree, yeah.
Let, let us reach out to y'all and we'll work on that, understanding what Mr. Austin Brooks is also interested in. I will mention this, uh, just before we do adjourn, I've been informed that there are a bunch of Girl Scouts downstairs, uh, that was the voices you heard earlier, and they're here to deliver the pledge of allegiance of the flag, so we'll give them the appropriate honor, um, and I think somebody's supposed to give, show them around the building or something, so it's 6:54.
They're supposed to what?
Show them around the building or something.
Oh, yeah, they were supposed to be here before the meeting started.
So anyway.
I'll show them around the building.
Bottom line is, if we could adjourn here and start back at 7 o'clock.
Sound good.
Six minutes, all right.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, girls. We're gonna pledge allegiance to the flag. I want you to get us started, okay? You ready? Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, for the unity and justice for all.
Good job.
Thank you. Good job. Now, if you would, tell me, if you don't mind, tell me your name. We'll go right down the list.
My name is Veronica Kaycook. My favorite animal is otters.
That's why? A fox?
An otter.
An otter. Okay.
I'm Ayla Spink.
Do you want her to say the name?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Veronica Kaycook. My favorite animal is otters and my favorite color is blue and yellow.
My name is Ayla Spink.
My name is Shelby Roper.
My name is Taylor Pickett.
My name is Avery Crow.
My name is Ella Rodriguez-Guska.
My name is Alexandria Lapino.
My name is Natalie Chilco.
My name is Ari Lee.
My name is Jayla Canoe.
Girls, thank you so much. You're from troop, what, 7006? And you did a wonderful job. And you're welcome here anytime and come back and we'll take any, and you can be excited. You're welcome to come back to the next meeting. So, anyway, thank y'all for coming.
This is my second time in here.
Yeah? Thank you.
Just so y'all know, the boys here have come over here and do that a lot. Y'all did much better.
They did. Okay. All right, now you're gonna take a tour of the sheriff's office. Man.
Awesome. Y'all ready? Y'all follow him?
Follow the captain there.
Follow that short guy.
If we'll all remain standing for a moment of silence. I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. We've got a nice crowd here tonight, so thank you for coming. I just wanna tell you briefly, I think we only have one event coming up. It's one of my favorite things, is Hits After Six. At, on April the 18th at Chestnut Square Park, we've got dueling pianos is coming. So, who here's been to the Hits After Six? It's good, it's a lot of, I know. I know. We have a great time and I hope everybody comes out, cause it's a, it's a good time for everybody. And let's move on. We're gonna go to the agenda additions and deletions. Do I have any additions or deletions? Go ahead.
Okay. Motion to add item 7E, Indian Trail Complete Street Wideaway Acquisition, partials 4 and 38 to the consent agenda, and remove item 9C from the agenda.
Okay. Anything else? Can I get a, can I get a motion for the amended agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All in favor? Unanimous. Very good. Okay, that brings us to presentations. We have an ARPA-enabled funds for Porter Ridge High School.
Alrighty, so we did this last year. We're gonna do it again this year. We're gonna let all the agencies that, over the last fiscal year, have received funds, come up and tell y'all what they used those funds for and how they were able to help their particular group or agency. So tonight, there's, they'll introduce themselves. There's a teacher and three students from Porter Ridge High School here. So, I'll let them come up.
Hi, everyone. My name is Charlotte Holland. I'm a junior here at Porter Ridge High School. And we're also here with Ms. Greer, who is our student leadership advisor, as well as Dr. Wall, who is our assistant principal.
My name is Bruce Joakim. It's nice to meet y'all.
My name is Austin Carnes.
And we would like just to thank you all for the, for the goods that you guys gave to our school. So what we were able to do with these is, we were able to get a whiteboard for our outdoor classroom, which is just an outdoor space that we can just get outside of the normal classroom and get some fresh air. And the whiteboard allows us to be able to have teachers actually teach outside and we can also like work out practice problems. It just makes the whole area, it just completes it and provides a more, it just provides a better space for everyone. And we would also like to thank you all for the desks and chairs for the classroom. And what this does is, it allows for a more flexible space. So the new desks that we received, it allows them to be moved around more easier to enhance the collaboration. And we'd also like to thank you all for the new furniture in our flex spaces. So we're able to get six, get furniture in six of our flex areas, which students are allowed to use before, during school. I know personally, I have multiple classes that go out into the flex areas every day and use those spaces. And we're also allowed to use them after school. So if we have a group project that we all need to work on and find a space, these areas with the new furniture that we were able to receive allows us to do so. And it just allows for a more collaborative and fun environment to work in. And I'd also like to just let you guys know that Porter Ridge High School is a leadership high school. And as of next Tuesday, hopefully, we're gonna become one of the six high schools in the nation that are recognized as a leadership high school by the leader and me. And since we're a leadership high school, the students were the ones who helped find you guys, find a need for you guys to help. So we'd like to thank you all.
Very good.
Thank you. Any questions?
No. Are you speaking for everybody, or?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if everybody was.
Okay.
Yes, we got a bunch of like stuffs like the whiteboard that she says, but also y'all have put a lot of smiles on the kids' faces there. Just wanna say that.
Very good. Well, I just wanna tell you that my daughter's graduated Porter Ridge High School about five or six years ago. And I'm a Pirate fan, so always happy. And I'm a Sun Valley fan too, but I'm a Pirate fan. Covering all my bases, that's all in. No, thank y'all for coming. Appreciate it. And it's, it's an honor to be able to help you guys out. And I'm very proud of the fact that, that you're in our neighborhood and you're in our town. Both high schools, we're very proud of. Very proud of.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So they mentioned one thing that was really interesting to us as part of the ARPA committee is that the students actually picked what the items were that they used at the school. It wasn't done by the teachers or by the principals or anything else. Like their student committee surveyed and looked at what they needed, which was a really, it's a different, it's a different process than any of the other schools use. So we actually thought that was really interesting. So the next presentation that we have is the Community Shelter of Union County. Hang on, before she stands up, I have to tell a really bad story that I did the last time. So I had sent out emails to five or six different agencies to come in and do this presentation. She had answered and said, "I'll come on," whatever our last council meeting was. And I completely overlooked the email. She sat through very graciously, the whole meeting, till about the last 10 minutes. And then she comes back, sees me in the back corner and goes, "I don't see my name on the agenda. Am I going tonight?" And I was like, "Oh." I felt so bad. So y'all be really, really nice to her tonight. Thank y'all.
Not a problem at all. And it was kinda cool. I just moved to Indian Trail about three weeks ago, so I got to learn a lot about the community as I was moving in. So I'm Melissa McCowen. I am the chief executive officer at the Community Shelter of Union County. And we provide homelessness services to our entire county. So it is our vision to end hunger and homelessness in Union County, and we do that a couple different ways. We have our crisis programs, which are emergency shelter and food programs. So emergency shelter is just like what it sounds like. If you don't have a place to sleep at night, or your kids don't have a place to sleep at night, you can come and stay at our shelter. We have, we have 90 beds there and, as I said, we serve the entire community. And last year, we served 6% of our emergency shelter residents came from Indian Trail. So I just thought that was important to note. We are the only provider in the entire community, so we serve single adult men, women, and children. About 650 individuals every year come through our emergency shelter. Some of the funding that you guys provided helped us do many, many things. We've been in our building for about five years. And so, you know, after five years of daily use on all of our equipment, it really starts to wear down. So you guys funded new mattresses for our folks, which was fantastic. We got new sheets and blankets and pillows and towels and all of the things that you knew, need every single day, just to be served with dignity and have a safe and clean space. Part of what I view our agency as, is a public service agency, right? So we are providing a service to keep people safe. And as part of that, we have a warming station. So when the weather outside is dangerous to human life, people can come and stay with us overnight. And we make sure that we keep people safe and off the street. When you have, you know, 120, 140 people in a building, you have to think about things like, like just pest and bedbugs and things like that. So part of the money that you guys provided allowed us to buy a new bedbug, bedbug oven, which is not something I ever thought I would be an expert at, but I am, and I can answer any question about that if you have it. But it's really important and helpful to us. If you have to do a bedbug treatment in a, in a facility that is the size of ours, it's about $6,000 per room. So this investment really, really helps. And will continue to help for the next five, six, eight years. Another part of our crisis services is our food programming. So we are the only soup kitchen that serves three meals a day, every single day, never ever closed. That's 1,095 meal opportunities every single year. In addition, we have a drive-through pantry, so people can just drive through. It's touchless, you pop your trunk, we drop about 100 pounds of food into your trunk and you drive off. That happens once a month. We also have a senior box program. So those senior boxes are filled with high protein supplies. So the nutrients that seniors sometimes have a hard time getting. So part of the funding that you guys provided helped us to buy food, buy those high protein foods, and then buy hygiene products. So everybody that comes to any of our food programs, we like to send them with hygiene products. Everybody that we serve is living at or below the poverty line, and hygiene products really add up. And even if you receive EBC or SNAP benefits, it does not cover paper products or hygiene products. So that's a huge help for a family of, you know, even a family of two, but especially a family that's got multiple children. Our, I'm trying to talk fast. I'm gonna slow down. Yeah, all right. Our stability programs include a couple different, right, so crisis, we wanna be there, we wanna meet basic needs for people, but we also wanna make sure that people have a way to get out of poverty or to get out of homelessness. So we look at that in two different ways. One is our economic mobility program. So we are connecting people who come to us to opportunities to earn higher wages. And we do that by connecting with local employers and helping to fill in gaps, so transportation and childcare and, and the things that are often barriers for people to, to remain employed, right? It's pretty easy to get a job for a lot of people, but it's hard to manage life when you're managing crisis all day long. So part of the money that you guys gifted us, we use to support our employment lab. So we got some new laptops that we'll be using in there. We got a printer, new chairs and workspace. And then our last stability program is rehousing, right? So if we want to end homelessness for people and we want to end it long-term, you help people earn higher wages and then you help people find appropriate housing that they can afford long-term. So a lot of the money that you guys gave for this, for that program in particular, was really about staff supports. So it's making sure that our staff have the equipment that they need to continue to work with the 631 people that come to us every single year seeking help and, and shelter. Between all of our programs, every year, we serve about 3,500 individuals. Those are unique individuals. And I think the most important thing for us is that 94% of everyone that we serve do not have a repeat episode of homelessness over a three-year period. So, you know, I am just so grateful that you guys chose to support our work. It really will make a huge impact over many, many years to come. You know, it's, nonprofits work hard every single day to write grants and, and do special events and try to raise money in every single way to take care of our community. It's just so nice to have Indian Trail who, who saw what we're doing and decided to support us. And I'll leave you with, you know, solving wicked problems requires collaboration, innovation, advocacy, but most importantly, resources. And you gave that to us, so we really appreciate you all.
Well, thank you for what you do.
Yeah. Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. So we're located, our facility is in Monroe. We're right off of Skyway Drive, right across from the farmer's market. Yep.
And then, one thing that was interesting to us is they are not affiliated with Union County.
We are not.
They're their own separate.
We're a private nonprofit. We raise all of our own money. We've got 45 employees. We've got a $1.8 million budget every year. So this money really, really helps support. You guys supported the things that nobody else wants to pay for, you know? So it was really nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Very nice. Well, that brings us to public comments. And by addressing council, you acknowledge you have read the town's public comment rules and will abide by them. Andrew Friend, come on up, Andrew.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Excuse me. My name is Andrew Friend. I have the pleasure of serving as the executive director of Council on Aging in Union County. We are a nonprofit organization that serves older adults and helps them live independently in their homes. I wanted to just start and say thank you to the town of Indian Trail and this council for allocating so much money of the ARPA funding to us small nonprofits. It really speaks volumes about your character as a town and you as individuals, that you have dedicated so much funding to support us small nonprofits. So at Council on Aging, we are submitting an application for ARPA funding through this round. And we had actually started, piloted a program at our agency this past year. So we've, we've received a one-time grant to pilot this program. It's called SLIP, Seniors Living in Place. And what we're doing is helping folks, and we are identifying fire and fall preventative measures in the home that we can implement to keep people safe in their home. There's some very alarming statistics with older adults and fires and falls. So for example, when you turn 65 years old, you're twice as likely to die in a house fire, at 75, three times as likely. And unfortunately, at 85, you are almost five times as likely to die in a home fire. And those are National Fire Protection Association statistics. In addition, according to the CDC, when, one in four older adults over the age of 65 fall each year. So we're looking for ways that we can implement different things to, to prevent. And those are national statistics, but we don't want that happening here in Union County and Indian, Indian Trail. So we have, with this program, purchased medical alert buttons and we've served over 300 people with this program this past year. So we're giving out free life alert buttons that do not have a monthly fee. We are installing address signs at the road, those big green reflective address signs, so that fire and rescue personnel can identify a home quickly and get to somebody in the event of an emergency. We're also installing these really neat, one-stop fire, stove top fire stops that, that go right under a hood vent. And unfortunately, the majority of fires happen on a stove top. Maybe an older adult forgets they're cooking something and, and a fire may happen. So this device will put that fire out. But unfortunately, this, this program has worked. But unfortunately, it's, the one-time grant that we got for funding for this is, we, we are not able to sustain this program, so we're reaching out for support. And I just wanted to thank you for your consideration in our application. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you for what you do also.
Absolutely.
Mary Nguyen?
My name is Mary Nguyen, and I live on Old Monroe Road. I wanna start off by thanking Mayor Cohn for his attempts to get the DOT to clean up their mess in our yards along Old Monroe Road. So thank you so much for that. It's now going on four months. The dry debris in yards along the road are bonfires waiting to happen. The lack of cleanup makes it impossible to maintain any type of aesthetic yard. The piles of debris are unsightly, but the limbs scattered all around, the huge ruts in the yard from their equipment, partially hacked stumps, and all the weeds growing and spreading from the DOT's unmaintained property are also issues. We have four large piles of debris in front of our properties, and one of them even encroaches on our private property, and they have yet to do anything to remedy this. Again, all of this goes against the town regulations that prohibit the accumulation of trash, junk, and debris. I also wanna revisit the sidewalks that I mentioned last time, especially since they were brought up earlier tonight as a future capital improvement project. Once more, I wanna ask the town council to please consider eliminating the five-foot sidewalk on the north side from South Fork Road to Midway Drive in order to be more fiscally responsible. This is an unnecessary expense, since there will already be a 10-foot sidewalk on the other side of the road, and the town has to foot the bill to install the sidewalks and maintain them. Speaking of money, I'm very frustrated at this point, so I'd like to propose that the town of Indian Trail think about taking the $1 million they are slated to give the DOT in July and instead pay a crew to clean up the mess that the DOT has made but can't seem to get up. That would actually be money better spent. Who knows what the DOT is doing with the charitable million-dollar donations that the town makes annually? Seriously though, can something be done to stop payment on these contributions when they can't seem to do what needs to be done? Thank you again for your time and efforts. I appreciate you listening to my complaints and suggestions.
Thank you, Mary Nguyen. Denise?
Good evening. My name is Denise Wyndham, and I live on Old Monroe Road. Last month, I spoke at the town council meeting, and I wanna say I genuinely appreciate that you reached out and you genuinely tried to help our family with the issues we are having with the DOT road widening project on Old Monroe Road. And you all know, and I wanna thank all of you for genuinely listening to us and our complaints, because we don't have anywhere else to go. Who else is going to help us at this point? One of the specific concerns I had was just what Mary Nguyen was saying, these large piles of trees and debris that have been left along the road for, at that time, it was three months, now it's four months. And we're not trying to be difficult. We're genuinely not trying to be difficult people. We understand there need to be road improvements and so forth. But is it not reasonable for us as citizens to expect some accountability here? At this point, some cleanup has transpired, but there's still so much to be done. We and many of our neighbors have seen absolutely no work done on our property since December. The potential fire hazard, as the weather gets hotter, along with the proximity to power lines, is truly becoming a concern for many people here. Additionally, again, some yards were torn up so much during the process that homeowners can't do reasonable landscaping. And I do understand that where the piles are, are either condemned property or properties that have been settled with the DOT, but some of it is encroaching. And it did make me wonder, when I saw tonight, that January 26th is now the start date, what is all this gonna look like by that point if they're not doing any maintenance? We were told initially that the, that phase of the tree removal was vital to keep the road project on schedule. And that was the main reason for creating the equivalency of a tornado's aftermath the week before Christmas. I don't mean to sound sarcastic here, but did the schedule then call for dead trees and piles of debris to rot away for months untouched? This is not in some wooded, undeveloped area of the state. This is in a densely populated area that's affecting people on a daily basis. So basically, the DOT came and wreaked havoc. They have not adequately cleaned up their mess. We have no idea when they're coming. And this gives us little hope for what the rest of this project is going to look like. Again, with what she said, the opposition to the particular sidewalk on Old Monroe Road, the north side, when I was looking at the numbers and so forth, this is a lot of money, quite frankly. And can we not evaluate and look at this and say, what is absolutely necessary here that we commit to financially? Again, I wanna thank you for trying to genuinely help us, all of you for your attention. And we talked to Todd, and he was most gracious to us earlier. But again, our main reason for coming here is, you guys are about the only hope we have to try and say to the DOT, "Hey, can we not have some help here? This is where we live. This is our community." And I don't think we're unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Any feedback? Yes?
Yeah. Mike, I'm sure we can talk to the DOT. I'm sure you have. I hope you have. When they anticipate a finish of the tree destruction and stump removal and so forth, I mean, there's gotta be an end time, because it's getting ridiculous.
Yeah. If I had a recommendation for the council, it would be this. After last meeting, you noticed they started cleaning up west of Old Monroe Road. You've heard from two citizens that have expressed what I believe to be legitimate interest, particularly as it starts to get summertime. It might be good for the council to authorize the mayor to reach out to Representative ARP and maybe Senator Johnson. You can certainly CC the DOT and see if there's a way that they could speed up that. Normally, we don't like to.
I will say that I've already done that. But that's, that's okay, cause I'm gonna do it again, and I'll do it again this week. And I, I sympathize with you guys. I don't like it. You know, it was funny, I had just sent both Dean ARP and Todd Johnson an email, and I had called Brett Kinnight with DOT several times, and he was actually supposed to come out one, one, but he didn't end up coming out. But just to let you guys know, what, and you guys, and maybe even the council, supposedly, they had to speed up the cutting the tree process down quicker because there's some bat that, that lives in those trees. And if they didn't get the trees cut, now this, now I didn't, I'm not saying this, this is what, this is what DOT says. So the, if they didn't get those trees cut down before, I think, October of this year, then, then they wouldn't have been able to, kinda like the, what was it? The little.
The tri-colored bat.
Yeah.
You're talking about the Carolina hill splitter.
The hill splitter. The same thing that, that stopped the toll road for, for a couple of years, I think, set it back. But to make a long story short, Mary Nguyen, Denise, I will call again this week. And it was funny, when I was going down there to check on that, I actually saw him down there working, down towards the, the Stallings Inn. And I, my hope was, and he had told me that it was the, that they had added another crew out there to come pick it up. I will, I will call him.
What we can do is look at our internal channels with NC DOT, see if we can get some sort of information. If so, we'll be happy to relay it to you and, and to these citizens. If they have dumped their debris on private property, which is, you know, what some of the speakers have talked about, then I think DOT needs to go in there and address that, cause it's not, it's not right.
It's not right. Todd?
You mentioned the $1 million a year. That's part of a voter-approved bond that was voted on years ago, and it was $5 million. And I don't think we can legally get out of that paying the million a year. The reason we're still paying now is cause it was, they allowed us to delay the payment due to COVID, cause it was delayed. So I don't think we can, you can ask the attorney, but I don't think we can get out of that agreement. No.
I'm not sure Mary Nguyen was seri, she was kinda half kidding maybe, or were you serious? It doesn't ever hurt to ask, does it, Mary Nguyen? I can tell you that. You might as well ask. Well, thank y'all.
I thought you wanted to know.
Yeah. Thank y'all for coming. Brings us to law enforcement. Captain Mullis.
Well, good afternoon again. So I wanted to, excuse me, I wanted to give you, I gave you guys two different pieces of paper or stuff to look at here. On this, on this one, this first, just to kinda get, tell you what I've given you, we're not gonna talk a whole lot about traffic tonight. I'm gonna wait to do that at next, the next meeting. But if you look at the very end of this, this says total calls for the month. These are the calls for the month of March. Total calls. So anyone in the town of Indian Trail calls 911. There were 4,963 of those calls. I have told my folks, and I, I think the sheriff's office as a whole is, is of the same opinion, if anybody calls 911, we're gonna go. It's, it's not a, it's not an if, but, but that's, people call for a reason and we're going, no matter what those, that is. But I just wanted to give you guys an, an idea of the call volume that comes in from Indian Trail. Almost 5,000 calls in that month that we went to answering those calls. Now, if you look at, out of those 5,000 calls, that does not always. that does not always mean that we take a report. And in those 5,000 calls, that's not what Indian Trail cars are actually going to. That could be a, any of our, during school, it could be any of our SROs answering those calls. It could be, and in that too, or I shouldn't say there are nine, there are almost 5,000 911 calls. A lot of that is our self-initiated stuff, and all of that is involved. But any, anything that is, anything that goes on our CAD system that law enforcement is doing in Indian Trail, there were almost 5,000 of those. Out of all of that, the next little group of numbers I gave you is what our guys actually did. And it handles all of the type-one crimes, but it's also your, your traffic offenses and other stuff is all lumped into that. But we actually took 269 reports for incidents that happened in Indian Trail. And like I say, those are broke down by incident. This, the first page of that has a pie chart that breaks them down as those type or part-one crimes. But if you look on the next two pages, it breaks them down just a little bit more and gives you a little more in-depth look at what those actual calls were and what those reports were for. But like I say, I'll answer any questions you guys have on that, but I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of the difference between when we actually make a report in reference to a crime and just stuff that we just have to go to just because it needs to be done. Everything's going well.
Any questions? Andy, thank you, and I just, maybe I should say something, but there's somebody up there that's looking at you and very proud of you.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
That brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the-
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? In unanimous. Brings us to public hearings. By addressing council, you acknowledge you have read the town's public comment rules, and we'll abide by them. Brings us to CZ 2012 001M Trails Dynasty Miniature Golf. CZ modification, Ms. Deese.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, council and mayor. My voice may be shaky. It is because I am freezing cold.
It is cold in here.
I apologize.
Who else is cold in here? Anybody? It's right, it's right chilly in here, isn't it?
Okay, so we're going to have several public hearings. I'm going to try to go as quickly as I can, because I know it's been a long meeting for you guys already. The first of which is CZ 2012 0001M. That M stands for modification. That means that we are looking at modifying a previously approved project. This is for Trails Dynasty Miniature Golf. So the request before you is to modify the existing CZ planning conditions. Aside from what is contained in this request, all the other conditions would remain in place. The intent is to try to rectify a recently constructed unpermitted building to remain and be used for recreational uses that are already allowed under the GBD on this property. And the applicant is Mr. Scott Merritt. What I would like to say, I mentioned this at planning board. I'd like to mention it here tonight as well, that planning staff, first of all, it's not about the land use. So the general business district allows for recreation. That's, if I were to pick a district, that's exactly where we want to see it. So that's, that's not what we're considering here tonight. What we are putting before you is, as planners, we are legally and ethically obligated to share with you where there are violations, where it doesn't meet the UDO. Now, through the conditional rezoning process, you have the ability to condition those out legislatively. And so that's, that's basically what is before you tonight is, you know, are you willing to condition out those violations? So here's an aerial view of the property adjacent to Union Prep Academy Younts Road, which is the road that runs behind Walmart. The current zoning is CZ GBD. You can see in that hatched blue area, that just shows that there's some sort of type of special approval on this property. Future land use shows medium-density residential. This is an area that we've had some recent rezonings up here on the north side of the map. So we will be looking at this area potentially for a change if, in the next comp plan update. Here's a couple of pictures of the property and the building. Then here's the most recent revised site plan. And then here's elevations. The recent revised elevation on the right, and what you'll see is the Unified Development Ordinance requires that the accessory structure match the primary. And so the change in color was an attempt to get closer to that. And this is just another view of it. Here's kind of what's surrounding, but we do think that modifying a metal structure to be compatible with the primary building here is somewhat challenging. So in summary, we're looking at an unpermitted metal structure that was, we cited a violation on April the 19th of 2023. The applicant has resolved all of the following, all but the following issues. Stormwater will be addressed during site plan. But the three issues that would be before council to condition out would be that the building materials are not in compliance with UDO Chapter 1300, the accessory building is located in front of the primary building, and tree save mitigation. So I do want to share with you that we, as planning staff, try to work with people and be as flexible as we can be. It makes it a little bit more difficult in situations like this where it's already been constructed without permits. So the consistency findings are before you. Again, it doesn't meet the required findings for those same three reasons. If council believes that it does, then you would need to state your details on that determination. And that is all I have for you on this one. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions? If not, I bring us to the applicant presentation.
Thank you, sir.
I just had a question. They, the last year, they've been dealing with this, you know, back and forth, I guess. Have they, with them changing the brick or the rock out front, does that look similar to their existing building?
So there's, aside from adding the brick, there's also specific guidelines within that 1300 where we've determined they, they just don't meet those. So as I stated in the summary, they do not meet Chapter 1300.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, I guess.
No, you're welcome.
I was just, I'm wondering, is there any way to save this project where, you know, we can't force the business, or we wouldn't force the business to tear down a $100,000 project? Tree save area, can we not, can we move it if it's still on the same property? I mean, does it have to be right there, the tree save area? Can it be on another area of the property? Because they have three and a half acres, I believe.
Sure, so Councilmember Ambergy, the, what staff had hoped is that we would get a plan showing true tree mitigation somewhere else on the property. And we haven't received that. But certainly, we would, we would allow them to plant it elsewhere on the property.
And then one last thing, I'll shut up. The color of the metal building, it's similar to the color of the academy, is it not?
It's, it's based on materials. So if you reach up to 1300, it's really about the metal more than the color itself.
And back to the metal building, I mean, we have metal buildings all over town. I mean, the basketball system over here, what's it called?
Carolina Courts.
Carolina Courts, it's a big metal building, is it not?
I was not under this current code or my watch.
Oh, okay, I'm just asking, but it's still a metal building in the swim, swim club down there?
They have brick on theirs.
Right. I'm just, I'm not trying to be argumentative.
We strongly enforce the Chapter 1300. And if you've got some properties you want us to take a look at, I'd be glad to look at them.
I get it, I mean, but I see metal buildings all over, throughout the town. Yeah, similar there. Okay, I'm just adding those questions. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. And any pre-existing development, you know, before that code regulation obviously is grandfathered, such as the house in the picture.
Okay. Todd?
So there's no leeway on the location of the building?
That is, that is up to this board. So what I'm putting before you tonight is the three areas that they are in violation, and the way to resolve that is for you to condition it out. Now, I would caution you on opening a can of worms on that, to be frank.
So if we don't condition it out, he's got to tear down the building?
That's correct, or relocate it elsewhere. Or he could relocate it on site, so there was a previous approval with a second building in a more appropriate location on the site.
So he was approved for another building on his property? He just put it in the wrong spot?
Correct.
That's, okay.
And didn't get permits from the town or the county?
Any other questions?
Isn't it on the comp plan to have two lanes each way on Younts Road?
Yes, so the comp plan does call this out to be a four-lane boulevard. It is an NC DOT roadway.
So if that transpires from DOT in the next 25 years, he might have to tear that building down then because of the easements or what have you.
Perhaps.
What are they called, Todd?
Right of way acquisition.
Right of way, excuse me. He might have to tear it down right of way in 20, as fast as we all see DOT move, you know.
Let's hear the presentation from the owner.
Yeah, we'll hear from Scott now, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that brings us to application presentation. Come on up, Scott.
Hey, I'm Scott Merritt, owner of Trails Dynasty Miniature Golf. And I get it, man, we made a mistake. We did. And just to answer some of the questions and all that, listen, we're a small mom-and-pop operation. We're good for the community. We fundraise, we do shut-ins there. I mean, it's amazing what we do for Trails, Indian Trail. And we're, because we are a part of the community, we live here. We're not some big glamorous corporation. And we made a mistake. We were zoned commercial. We thought we could build a building, a secondary building. That other building that you are talking about was supposed to be for a bakery, I think, three or four, five years ago, however many times we went through a thing. And it was in the back part of the place. And through the fundraising and through what the economy was doing, we decided not to do it. But this building was just supposed to be, the concrete pad had been there for a long period of time. And we decided to put a building up to enhance our facility and to have an indoor place for rain, for birthday parties, because our ice cream parlor place gets full, and to have other events out there and stuff. So we thought we could put up a metal building, because it does state that we can put a secondary building up. Hindsight, we realized we made a mistake. And going through this process, you know, we've, we've been beat up, and we've been slandered, and we've been, I mean, it's just been crazy. But we hold no grudges. We're, we, we love everybody. We love y'all, guys. We love what y'all do. We love our community. We're just trying to do the right thing by our community. And doing our study, we realized that we're missing an age bracket in that 20 to 30 range that is not getting reached in our community. So we thought that we would put this place together for possibly ax throwing to get that age group there, so they could talk, communicate, share some of the gospel, if you want to, you know. I don't want to get, because I don't know what y'all's beliefs are. But anyway, that's what we do. So we put it up there, and now we realize that we, we can. So as far as the face of the building goes, we would, we just put brick up there. But we can put a hardy plank, which is what the other putt-putt is, you know, the other building is, and paint it the same color. I mean, it's actually just a change, so it's not a big deal. The tree place where they keep saying tree save, it was not a tree save error on the plan initially. It was a tree protection area. So when you, being a civil engineer, when you go through a planning process and you mark stuff on a plan, that means you put up tree fencing, and you don't run any equipment in there. Tree protection area. And you don't damage any of the tree roots and stuff. The good Lord took down some of those trees, weather storms and all that, so the place was open, so that's the reason why we put it there. And as far as, we are in, we are not in the right of way, the Younts Road right of way. We're not. We're in a setbacks. I know, we're in the side setback, and we're in our front setback. So I think the only thing y'all would really need to change is, would be the, and I think we can handle it a couple of ways, but the only thing we really need to change was, you know, was the view of it. And we can do that. The tree mitigated save area or whatever, but on that plan, you showed, we showed where we were planting trees back in through there, the ones that were torn down. So we've already had that problem resolved. And then as far as the, being in front of the existing building, it's very little in front of the existing building. I think that would be the only thing you'd have to make a change on, would be where the building is. It's just like 10 feet or so, it's in front of the existing building. So that would be the only change that would probably, y'all would need to make that change on that. Or we thought of an idea that we could separate that parcel out, share the pond, share the parking lot, and therefore, it's just its own entity. And therefore, it's not in front of that building. It's not in front of my existing building. It would be a separate parcel. And that would take care of that one mistake that we made and put it, you know, a little bit 10 feet in front of it. So I think that might alleviate some of the problems. But there we have it, you know? I love you guys. I'm not going to hold any grudges, whatever you guys vote, man. And I, you know, I am, we are sorry that we made that mistake. We're just trying to rectify it and put something in there good for the community, and that's all we're all about.
Any questions? Mr. Guy?
You're a licensed contractor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you know, one of the fundamental things about being a licensed contractor and building something is, I mean, everybody in construction knows that you go in, you come in with a plan, and you get permits, and the county inspects everything that you do. So there's no inspection on the slab. There's no inspection on the metal building to see if it's anchored, how it's anchored. It's going to take a structural engineer. I just can't believe that, it's hard to believe that a licensed contractor that knows all these things would, would make this big a mistake.
Yeah, and I get, I get the reason why you're looking at that. But I'm a civil engineer, so we don't build buildings. I build subdivisions mostly. I built trails.
But you're a licensed contractor, right?
I'm a licensed contractor. Site work development, water, sewer, storm, erosion control, you know, all those things, grading, curb and gutter, pavement. Yeah, that, I know like the back of my hand, stormwater.
Everybody in construction knows that.
I don't build buildings. You know, I usually don't build buildings, so, but I get, I get what you're saying.
I just-
Did, are you done, Dennis?
Yeah.
Did you not have the county inspected? I thought you did.
I had Mark Griffin, he called me, and we talked about it. And he said that as soon as, if we passed, that he would work with me and get the, get everything approved, and we would move forward. So he said he would put a expedite, is what he-
Thank you, Mayor. What's the facility going to be used for?
We're going to, our plan was to use it for ax throwing, because we were trying to reach that age group in that. So that would be that, more or less, that age group that we would try to reach.
You have a retention- You have a retention pond on the property?
Yes, sir.
And it, it would handle the runoff for both buildings?
Yes, sir, it can handle thirty-two hundred square feet of more runoff, that building's only twelve hundred square feet.
And you put the, uh, building next to the parking lot?
Yeah, yeah.
Would it be handicap accessible?
Oh, yeah, we had to put that sidewalk in, but when we were notified the, that, you know, we're violation, we were told to stop and not do anything else, so we were in the process of, you know, doing other things with the building, but we were told to stop, so we stopped.
And, uh, your putt-putt course is handicap accessible, correct?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So, this, this, this will be a handicap, something handicap could do too, if they're in a wheelchair, cathode axe.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, you know, we, we do a lot of stuff for the community, the Down Syndrome people, uh, you know, the handicap, we do, we do a lot of those things, and we're not, we're not braggarts, we don't, you know, I even hate bringing that up, but we don't braggers, we don't, you know, toot our own horn, that's not what we do. We've been in this community for ten years, that thing's been there for ten years, and people love it, you know, and it's just, uh, it's been a blessing to us to see how many people come out there and really appreciate it. And that's what the, the good Lord gave me the idea ten years ago, so we built it. You know, and, and let me just, let me just do a little testimony here. Good Lord gave me this idea five years before it was built, right? Took me five years to go, okay, Lord, I'll do it. When we went through that, planning process and all that, architect and all that stuff, went to the banks, they would not loan me any money because it was an unknown entity, right, they don't do it. So they wouldn't loan me any money. So I had to fork out, the good Lord, I'll be praying about it, the good Lord, he says, okay, and he's blessed us, don't get me wrong, he blessed me. We've put out a million dollars to build that whole facility, but the land, the putt-putt, the clubhouse, everything. Me and my wife, we just threw it out there, that was it, that was all of our savings, and we put it into that. For the community, because we've been praying about, that's when crime and all that was going on ten years ago, you know, it was really crazy and, and youth and everybody was just going crazy, so we were, and that's what we did. And it's been a blessing to us, don't get me wrong, it's really been a blessing. But do you think we're going to get that million dollars back? It won't happen, it won't. We, we hire teenagers, we got to pay them right, you know, so there's, there's a lot of cost and all that, and tax dollars. I mean, you know, we're good for the community, we, we do tax dollars, I mean, I see y'all having y'all's budget meeting. This place here would give you more tax dollars for your budget. But, just a little testimony of what we do, and that's what we do. So, I appreciate all you guys do for, for the community also, and we're just here trying to help it out.
Well then, since you won't brag, I will. I don't have a problem with the metal structure, look across the street, Carolina courts, a big asset to our community is a metal building. We got ice, we got the ice rink here, we got the skating rink here, we got putt-putt. We have a lot of things that are a benefit to the community. Couple of years ago, we were rated one of the top fifteen places to live. Family things like that are what they look at, and the fact that you're a private entity providing entertainment doesn't cost the town a dime. I appreciate what you're doing, I thank you. You make Indian Trail a better place to live, an axe-throwing facility, and your facility is in the public interest. By getting that recognition, it maintains all of our property values here. It's a benefit to the town, it's a benefit to the community, I see no way to say no to this, I thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Clarence?
So, I, I have not really questions, but a lot of comments. This situation has been going on for a while, I remember last summer, I think there was a petition or something going on, and there's a bunch of emails, so I have a lot of response to this, and I'm going to be all over the place, so forgive me. I went back and watched the planning board meetings, um, for this, and I, I think the vote at the last planning board meeting was for denial, right, unanimous. So, when I was looking at the planning board meeting, at around eighteen minutes and twenty-eight seconds, and I'm not going to use the word quote, but basically you said, "But we aren't here to argue, here's the thing, it's a building for the community." You know, we can't fix everything, we can fix everything to make it right. And where I see this is, you're saying we're going to start from, let's say there are ten points. You want to start from number nine and say, okay, I'm going to make it right from number nine, but the town or the planning board is saying, okay, we need to make it right from number one. The permits. From your own words, you just said that it costs you a million dollars, you won't get that million back. The reason for permits, I'm almost fifty years old, I started framing houses when I was around nineteen years old. Permits and building structures, the reason for getting permits and, um, is because of insurance purposes. If for some reason you can't get your million dollars back and you have to sell that facility, the next person that buys it needs to know that everything was built properly. And that's where inspectors come in. Now, I'm more versed in framing houses or residential than I am commercial, but I know that if you were to put a restroom in there, you're going to have to break up concrete, you're going to have to put rebar, you're going to cut concrete, rebar. The footings, you're going to have to prove that the footings can support the structure that's there.
Yeah, we can do that with the gauge, PSI gauge.
So, you know, and again, I see it as you're saying, we can fix it from step number nine, but the planning board is saying, well, it's, it needs to be fixed from step number one. We need a footing that we can expect, we need to make sure that we have the right concrete, the right anchors, everything for this building. Let's see, also, for instance, the process of pulling permits, I'm, uh, building a house for my daughter right now. And, um, it's been, uh, maybe two or three years since I've built something, and I went to get my permit from Union County. And I forgot, I need to come to Indian Trail first, so I called up here, I didn't tell them who I was, it wasn't important, they treated me kindly. I came up here, I got my permit to do the house. Well, when the inspector came out, he asked me about the deck, and I said, well, I'm not going to attach it to the house, I shouldn't need a permit. And he said, yeah, you do. So I had to go get a permit, you know, the first inspection, I failed. Came back to Indian Trail, got my permit, so I can get it from Union County. So I said this to say, there's a process. And even if we don't, we can say, we didn't know, or we made a mistake, we're still involved in this process. And the process is for the vetement of the next person that, whether somebody bought it or if an accident happened. The insurance company needs to know if they're paying out money, that something was done right. And it's important for me, um, again, there was a lot of emails sent about this situation. It was continued at the planning board, so for the people, when I vote on this, it's important for the people of Indian Trail to know how I'm voting or why I'm voting. To me, this is almost like if someone was driving a car, so they're fourteen years old, didn't have driver's license, didn't have insurance, and then they go get in a car accident, and then they call the insurance company and say, hey, I was just in an accident, I'm a licensed, is there any way you can cover me? It's not going to happen. So, you know, there's a process that, that should have happened. And if we're willing to make everything right, let's go back to step number one, and let's make it right. We can't start, start at step number nine to make it right. So, that's where I am, um, you know, with everything. Because again, I've, I've gotten so many emails about this, um, let's do the right thing. And for my vote, you know, the right thing is going to go back to step number one.
When you, and I'll, I'll answer some of your questions, so we will go back to step number one. Because when we do pull a permit, they will come out there, they will check the foundation, they will check the building. All that will be permitted, you know, that's the reason why we'll do that, so we will have to go back and do that. That's why we talked to Mark Griffin, and that's when Mark Griffin said he'd come out there and speed everything up, and we would go back, we, we will have to go back to step one. So that's, so that's when the permitting come in, even though it's already there, it's kind of like, you know, if you build houses, sometimes they build houses and they forget to get the foundation inspected. Or the, they pour the foundation, this happened before on other construction projects, because I know a lot of home builders. The inspector didn't get out there, they went ahead and poured the, they went and poured the foundation, you know, a crawl, crawl space. So he come out there and he goes, well, did you do any test cylinders? Yeah, we did some test cylinders, okay, well, we'll have to get those tested. Or then sometimes they've got a machine that does the PSI checking too, on slabs. So it's a little gauge that you can use, and you can shoot it and it'll tell you the PSI of the concrete. And, and all that's written on, also, what, when you buy the concrete, it's written on what PSI the concrete is.
The other thing is, to vote yes opens up the box for anybody else also.
Oh, I get, I get that, I get that, yeah, yes, sir.
Yep. Anybody else?
Has there been any determination that the concrete pad or the building isn't structurally sound?
No, no, it is.
It was permitted, so there's no way to know.
Any, any other comments?
I can hear a lot on this, uh, committee here about safety, and, uh, I mean, that's, that's one major issue here. We don't know, uh, we don't know how that building is anchored, uh, we don't know how old and what kind of concrete was used and if it was poured properly. And, uh, the other issue is water runoff, it's, it doesn't comply with our water runoff regulations, and you can flood somebody else's property, uh, and when you sent me an email asking for help and, and, you know, I, I'd like to help you, but you've got to go by the, with the high density that we have here. And I, like I mentioned to you, you could, you could be sued by somebody down, downstream from your building if you're, if you got water runoff on it, and that happens a lot. So we have to do things right.
Oh, yeah.
I suggest you, you, slab's been there for a long time, I, I suggest go get you another, put you another slab after you resubmit your permit, disassemble your building and reassemble it on this, uh, a new slab with permits.
Well, there's another way to help with, uh, water runoff, all he has is his roof that will be running off. He can run down the gutters into barrels buried under and use it for self-irrigation. I know that's a possibility for water runoff, um, not necessarily having to use the retention pond or what have you.
But in that design that you saw up there, the engineer already just was doing the runoff, and it goes through the parking lot and goes through the pond, which is the way my parking lot is designed. So that runoff from that building, I don't know, she didn't, I mean, it wasn't pointed out, but the roof drains go into a, a pipe and it cuts into the curb and goes out through the parking lot and goes into the pond. And speaking of flooding, Robert Ross was not here today, he did call me, but, uh, my neighbor. And, um, he was there at the planning board meeting and he spoke out about it, and he, he talked about the flood and how he don't get any water from me, none, no water from me at all. But he does get it from Walmart, you know, Walmart floods his property. So what you're talking about, mom and pop don't have a lot of lawyers, don't have that big Gita that you talked about, and people were getting sued for being flooded. I didn't hear Walmart getting sued by Robert.
I've been in business.
I'm just saying, it, it, there's a big difference in mom and pop here.
I've made mistakes and I had to, I had to suck it up and straighten up what I did.
I get it, and, and I know, look, we're just trying to help the community. If y'all deem it's not necessary, then that's fine, I mean, we love you guys, so y'all, y'all, I mean, we're just here for the community.
All right, Crystal, why don't you?
I just want to make a few, it'd be really quick, I mean, Clarence kind of, um, touched on it. I think my, my concern is we try to be non-biased, and you coming up here, and I support what you do. I think having something like that in our community is great, but if we say yes to you, what do we do to the next person that comes up and decides to do something before, you know, pulling permits and doing things in the right order? So, I think that's my main concern, is it sets a bad precedent where others may try to follow you, and then, why did you do it for him and we, you can't do it for us, kind of thing comes into play. I think that's where, like, my heart's trying to go to the right place, I feel for you. I mean, I really do, you see, I'm sitting here like torn, I'm going through the emails and looking, but I think you have to do what's fair for all, and I, I'm kind of torn with that, because I feel like if I do it for you, then what do I do for the next person that comes up and says, okay, I did the same thing, you did it for him, what do you do for me?
Last time, last...
Make a motion.
Hold on one second, when you make a motion, just a second, I, I want to make a comment too, and, and I remember when, when you did the, I was on council, when you did the, the putt-putt, and I was all for it. And you, you've done a good thing for the town, there's no doubt about it, I, I like the putt-putt, been there, been a long time since I've been there, but, but I've been there. And I, I think what I hear from council and, and what I'm hearing, uh, is, is this, I saw back in the summer where there were petitions asking people if they wanted to, if they, they wanted an axe-throwing, uh, uh, facility on your property. And I was scratching my head a little bit at the time, I said, well, you know, that, that hasn't even been approved yet for an axe-throwing, I, I saw several other people put, put it online, it's, you know, we, we, and, 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 and I don't, I'm not saying you did this, but what if people, if they knew that they couldn't put that there, and because it is in a, the, the, uh, building is in a place that's not approved. If someone else gets the same idea or the same treatment, well, I'll just go build it, then I'll put a petition online and see, I'll get enough people involved in it. And, uh, you know, it's a good thing for the town, uh, it's a good thing for, for that, and we can put some pressure that way. And, you know, and, and Scott, I don't, I don't know that you did that, but somebody could do that, somebody could very well do that. And, and the, the, you know, what, what I see the problem is, is about two months ago or two months before this, someone else right down the road from you, uh, we approved a zoning, I believe it was, for the same road, right down the road. What if they would have just gone and built a building, or built whatever they were going to build, and didn't, and didn't, uh, get any permits for it? Well, what's the difference? You know, and, this like Crystal said, does that, does that open up a can of worms? That, hey, we let, you let this guy come down, he built a building, and then he came back and asked for it, but he did it in a place he wasn't supposed to do it. And, you know, he, he did it this way, then you pretty much, well, got to let the next per, you know, why, why wouldn't we let the next person who built something that wasn't supposed to without permits to do it? And I, I do, I understand that, and, and to me, I, I, I don't like the fact that, that, um, that it's just done this way, that, 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 but, but facts are facts, and, you know, it's a, uh, you know, I, I, I would like to see you be successful, I'd like to see, I, I know that you're, you're, you're trying to do this for the right reason. But I just, I don't see it either, and that's just my, my opinion, so, uh, if somebody'd like to...
I think Melanie wanted to enter, check something.
Okay, that's right, I'm sorry.
The, uh, I'd like to comment since you opened the debate, is that okay?
Well, you've made, make it quick, please.
Yeah, I'll make it quick, I just think that, uh, elected officials, and we're here because, um, we suspend the rules, you know, a lot, and we had a form for you to fill out to make this modification request, so the process is there. It's not unusual for someone to find out that they've done something and they needed the permit or they needed something. So as an elected body, I think we represent the people, and I think the people don't have a problem with your facility. I think the people would like to have it, so I think I was elected to represent the people and their wishes. I think their wishes would be they're okay with this, and that's all I got to say.
It's a sad day.
I'll touch back on that, I think we do represent the people, and, uh, I, I think what's fair for Mr. Merritt is fair for everybody. And, and if, if you can't, if, if you, you know, if everybody went and built an unpermitted, on unpermitted, you know, then, then, you know, you're opening up, so I guess it depends on which, which way you look at it, Mr. Gay, I...
It's a sad day when you can't build whatever you want on your own property though in America. It's sad.
We all voted on the UDO, every one of us here voted on the UDO, so let's follow the UDO.
Okay, that, this, let me open up this port, are you finished, Scott?
Let me just make, because, uh, I'm, I'm, here's, here's my thing. If you do vote it no, would you at least let me keep my concrete pad? Because, I mean, I could, if I took the building down, could I just keep that concrete pad? I mean, it's not doing any damage to anything, it's just an open space, we'll have picnics out there on the pad, if y'all vote it down, I mean, that, that's, that would be a request, you know.
I don't see a problem with that, I, I don't...
No, neither, as long as you get, you know...
Oh, I don't, and I'd like to see you move your building, if you would, Scott, to, and I think it's permissible behind your building, correct? I mean, wasn't the original plan for it to be behind?
Yeah, bakery, we, we had a bakery.
Back there where your bakery is and I come out there and help you you move it, you know. I I I feel very strongly about you having, you know, what you what you want to do there. It's just in the wrong place.
I think we need to have, check with planning before we commit to something, though.
Randy, do you, if you'd like to come up, do you have a, would you have a problem with the?
Yeah, it's been there a long time, the pad.
So the pad was placed in 2021. Planning would be fine with the pad staying. We 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 would, if this is denied, we want to work with Mr. Merritt to give him plenty of time. We we don't like the situation we're in and we haven't from day one. I will need to defer to engineering because the pad is a stormwater issue more than anything else, so I'll defer to Todd to second that.
Is he here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if you let him keep the pad, isn't that the same argument of letting him keep the building? I mean, because you're light wolf. You let him keep the pad, then you're gonna let someone else keep the pad. I mean, it kind of defeats your argument.
That's a good point.
You know, I mean, y'all, y'all just, y'all just.
That might be a good point.
You just defeated your own argument. Why not let him keep the pad and the building? I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. I can't recall the plan, to be honest with you, how that pad itself sheet flows. I mean, the the point was trying to get the building to drain to the to the parking lot, which it does technically based on the plan he submitted to us. So him to leave the the additional concrete is additional purview that we would have to look at to see if anything needed to be done to try to get that going away from the street, because the problem is if it's starting to drain towards the road, which we know these culverts along DOT roads are at capacity now. If you add to that, that's why I give you two examples. Lanet pinstriping right down here beside of us in the funeral home that's a little further down. They have dried attention in front of their properties and that is not because of us. That is because of DOT. Because Matthews Inter Road between Smith Farm and Stallings culverts are at capacity right now. So you cannot add any more impervious to that roadway. And so they DOT made them put dried attention out there. Now granted, it's not a big pad. So, you know, but technically I can't make that call right now. I'd have to look at it, so my, you know, my suggestion is we'll we'll take a look at it and hopefully we can keep the pad. Right.
Yeah. Clarence?
Then I would, I would recommend that if it's denied that he has to remove everything. But then he can come back through planning or through engineered and then get it approved. As Councilman Barber said, that way we're not leaving any kind of, you know, we're not making the plan feel even for everybody. That way, you know, there's no questions, everything's removed. And then he can come back and ask for special permission. I'd feel more comfortable.
Randy, I got a question for you. Would a would a concrete pad be permissible i- i- if he came and said, would that, I know a building was not, but would a concrete pad be, would it have been permissible or got permitted?
Can I just interject because Ms. Cox and I are kind of having a panic attack? Can we just open the public hearing and then I'll answer that question?
Okay, all right. All right, then I can, then maybe you will answer that question.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, my mistake. I'd like to open this portion up to a public hearing. There is no public comment. There's nobody here signed up. So I'd like to open and close this portion of the of it. Can I get a motion?
Motion to open and close the public hearing.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, thank you. I apologize for having to make that request. So the the pad itself, if you go back to the the three, the three issues that planning was having on where it didn't meet the code. All of those issues go away if the building goes away, right? He he has to mitigate the trees, but he can mitigate the trees somewhere else and still leave the pad there, so.
Can I reject about the tree save? Well, the tree save is still, the the trees still are not there that were originally there when it was approved for the tree save area. So somewhere they need to be mitigated.
Right, right. But he he can mitigate those elsewhere on the site and the pad could stay.
Okay, and and that would be permissible even, it's the building that's is, I'm trying to find out is the problem, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, okay, because Mr. Barber brought up the point that, you know, if you leave the 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 concrete pad, why not leave the building? But the but the pad may be permissible without without the building.
They could leave the pad and correct these three violations.
Gotcha.
Potentially.
Yeah, a building's going to have a sloped roof and that's going to accelerate the water. That's the difference between a flat pad and a building with a sloped roof.
Gotcha. Okay, all right.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, just real quick question. If you left the pad and he wanted to put some sort of covering over it, would that fall back into the building or?
We would be right where we're at with with the slide before you. He would be in violation on those three, those three we have.
Okay, yes.
Is the building movable or you have to tear it down?
It's a metal building, so I would think, I'm sorry, it's a metal building, so I think, I mean, it was assembled. It wasn't welded. So I think we could probably take it apart and move it.
But you don't know.
Well, I've never done it, so, I mean, I had a crew, professional crew, come out there and and put it up, so.
It's done all the time.
Hopefully they can move it in the back or move it, move it. It is, it is permitted, right, Randy, somewhere behind there, correct? Yes, okay, all right.
Is there any way to table this and let him, see if he can move it, see if he can keep the pad, see if he can mitigate the trees? Is there any way to maybe get a compromise here to where we could do that?
I I don't think that's, I mean, I mean, you can do anything, but I don't think that's in question here. I think I think the question is the building, is the building go goes or stays is what is what the question is. I mean, I think we we tried to come up with some sort of compromise, but.
I think the best thing is for Mr. Merritt to go back to the drawing book, drawing book and get on with his business and with his life and 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 just do it the right way.
Well, then I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to deny a consisting findings as read into the record by staff for C Z twenty twelve dash zero zero one M.
All in favor?
You're denying it, denying the building.
Okay.
Okay, just let let.
Hold on a minute. Nobody's voting.
Consistency finding.
Let's be clear. The consistency findings says that it does not meet the code. So if you vote to approve this, you're agreeing and you do need to have some sort of details of a determination as to why you're saying that those three requirements are being met.
So if we're denying this, then
Oh, okay.
we're we're conditioning out. If I deny it, I'm conditioning out, correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, that was my intent on the motion and we got four votes.
Well, again, as it says on the slide, you have to give details of that determination. You have to tell us.
All right, then as, and the reasoning being is the facility is in the is in the public interest.
Yeah, we need to vote again.
All right, so I go to the next motion.
No, once, after there's a vote, the mayor needs to state.
I'm sorry, yeah.
It passes or it fails with what the vote is. And I don't know that the ma- mayor ever made any comment.
I never said what 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 it was, so I never. Yeah, I do. I never said, so let's go back because and now that it's been explained what we're doing. You got, Mr. Mr. Ambergy, you got a problem with with being honest up here or is that, is that what your problem is?
And he read it, and we've all read what we're supposed to read.
So let let let's do this, let's do this the right way.
Right, I read it.
Oh, I put my hand exactly where I planned to, sir.
I did too.
Okay.
Okay, so there was no vote. The mayor didn't, didn't, didn't.
You didn't certify the vote.
Didn't certify the vote.
You can do it again.
They need to do it again, so, all right, go ahead. Let's do it again.
Okay, I I make the motion again, okay?
Okay.
All right. I make a motion to deny a consisting findings as read into the record by staff for C Z twenty twelve dash zero zero one M as it's in the public interest.
Okay, all in favor? Mr. Ambergy and Mr. Barber are in favor, all against, Ms. Buholak. Dennis and Clarence are for, so.
I'll make the next motion. A motion to approve C Z twenty twelve dash zero zero M Trails Dynasty Miniature Golf C Z modification as presented.
Okay, all in favor? You got Mr. Ambergy and Mr. Barber all against, Mr. Mr. Gay and.
What are we voting on now, just so that I know?
I think I think we're we're square now.
I think we're correct.
Nothing passed, so there needs to be another motion because no motion has passed if if someone else wants to make another motion.
I'll make a motion, but I do have a question really quick for you. So if we do want to add something in to allow him to keep the pad as long as it's, you know, engineering checks it out and it being okay, does that need to be read into the motion?
The only thing on your agenda tonight is whether or not you're approving the conditional rezoning modification.
Okay, so he brings that back another time.
Okay, right.
Because I am a.
So why don't we vote, I mean, why don't we vote on anything else?
I can.
If we voted it down.
I'll make a motion to, sorry, I will make a motion to adopt the consistency findings as read into record by staff for C Z twenty twelve dash zero 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 one M.
All in favor?
And what does this?
The consistency findings that Ms. Dees read that were in the planning staff report stating that it was not consistent.
That's not consistent?
Correct.
Okay, all righty.
All right, all in favor, one one more time. Mr. Olson Brooks, Ms. Buholak and let's see, and Dennis, all in favor, all against, Mr. Ambergy and Mr. Barber.
And then the second motion, I would like a motion to, sorry, I would like a motion to deny C Z twenty twelve dash zero 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 one M Trails Dynasty Miniature Golf C Z modification as presented.
Okay, all in favor? Clarence, Dennis and Crystal in favor, all against, Mr. Barber and Mr. Ambergy, okay.
For the record, will you just explain to the applicant and the audience, I think, what what happened, what passed and what didn't?
Okay, well, I, what pa, what didn't pass was your build, your, it didn't approve the building, right? It did, it was denied. So basically, is that what you, is that what you're asking for?
Yes, sir. So the, it was three to two to vote to deny the conditional rezoning modification.
Right, three to two vote, exactly. Thank you. So, Mr. Merritt, I think you understand how the council voted, so. Okay, thank you, thank you. Let's move on to the next.
Okay, our second public hearing for tonight is Z M twenty twenty four zero zero one six. This is lots forty eight and forty nine on Technology Drive and this is a conventional rezoning. Thus, the Z M in the case number instead of the C Z. So we're looking to rezone two parcels from Light Industrial to R B D. And really, this is just someone potentially wanting to vet, to develop the property and it's got split zoning, which causes an issue and I like to explain it, they they have to serve two gods, right? They're trying to serve the Light Industrial Zone District and the R B D at the same time, so it really just doesn't work. There's constant conflicts. So we want those those colors on the map the same. And that's what they're before us tonight to request. So here is the lots. This is Sam's Car Wash and Gas Station here. Union West Center and then just a little bit further down the Food Line Shopping Center. This is the street view northeast along Technology Drive, southwest, the other view along Technology Drive. And then straight in from Technology Drive. You can see our pretty little zonings on. And the current zoning, you can see the dark purple versus the light purple. And we're trying to get some consistency in there with all of these lots along here. Future land use sets it out just like it it's predicted to be, so we love it when that happens. Just looking at a little bit of what's surrounding it. Again, you've got the equipment rentals with Sunbelt, you've got a couple of vacant lots there as well. And the comprehensive plan, as mentioned previously, future land use is office, business, employment. So this change in these districts doesn't change any of that. It falls in line with the the comp plan. And there's no concept plan required because it is a zoning map amendment, not a a conditional approval. So the consistency findings, the comprehensive plan anticipates further development of business, business, employment, office in this area. It's a reasonable request and in the public interest because it promotes the comprehensive plan goals with economic development goal number one and land use and housing goal number six. That's all I have for you on this project. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
And if we could open the public hearing as well.
Okay, there is no applicant presentation, so there can, there's no one signed up. Can I get a open and close portion of the?
Motion to open and close public hearing.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. I guess, are we ready for a vote?
If there's any question.
Any questions? Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consistency findings as read into the record by staff for Z M twenty twenty four dash zero zero one six.
All in favor? You need to have a motion.
Also make a recommendation to approve Z M twenty twenty four dash zero zero one six for lots forty eight and forty nine, Technology Drive rezoning as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous. I'm sorry, go right, go right.
Thank you. Can we move on to the next one?
Yeah, moving on, yes, sir.
All right, let's go.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so our final public hearing of the night is C Z twenty sixteen zero zero seven M I T Industrial Park. This is another C Z modification. I think we're going to go on record here with two mods in one night. This one we are fairly excited about. This is the Duke Energy Site that that we disclosed that they had purchased about a year and a half ago. So the request is to modify. So this was Valley Business Park. It was originally forty seven acres with a C Z approval on it. And they're requesting to modify that that plan and its conditions only for the twenty nine point two acres that they have. So all the other property will remain intact with that original C Z in those conditions. And this is to allow contractor office with outdoor storage instead of the multiple Light Industrial Warehouse buildings that was shown on the original plan. And the owner and applicant is Duke Energy. So this is the site on Radiator Road. You have Sagecroft Townhomes recently constructed across the street, Pinnacle Storage that was constructed. And then the old Radiator Specialty Property back here. Current zoning, again, you see that hatched area where it was C Z Light Industrial shows you that there was some sort of special approval on it. Future land use set it out for mixed use. We've got a couple of photos of the property. This is north from Radiator Road. Northwest, that's Pinnacle Storage. There's another view. And northeast on Radiator Road and a nice close up of our pretty sign. And of course, this is directly off Oldman Road. So a little bit about the concept plan. Tyler did all of these wonderful callouts for me, so there's no way I would have enough patience for all those arrows. But just a little bit on the site plan. We are the buffer, the twenty foot buffer on the the side closest to the Radiator Specialty Property. It's, it was twenty five, so they're requesting it down by five feet, but it's like to like. So, you know, in in some sections of the code, you wouldn't require any buffer, so we don't see a big deal with that at all. They've got some. They've got some trailer storage, material storage, they have training yard and staging yard. Some of this would, you know, not really be in use unless it, you know, there was a, a big storm or an event where they would need to, to utilize it for staging. And then you've got the offices and the warehouse and some coverage storage as well. The portion that is closest to the residential does have a fifty-foot buffer entry safe. And this just shows the original approval where you've got multiple buildings, and Duke's asking to just build one larger building. And here they are side by side. So I will have to say, we were very pleased when Duke first submitted the elevations. We made comments, they immediately came back and agreed to brick the entire building, so we were very happy with that. They've been really good to work with, very responsive to our comments, so I can't, I can't say enough about that. Here's the other views with the covered open loading area, and then the warehouse side. So in summary, the original approval was to facilitate development of a Light Industrial Business Park. So it was very much a concept plan, so it makes sense that we're back here changing it a little bit. It was sold to Duke in 2022. The Light Industrial zoning district and the conditional district will not change, only the concept plan that relates to the twenty-nine acres. And again, it's contractor office with open outdoor storage. And your consistency findings, so the comprehensive plan anticipates further development of mixed use in this area. The request is consistent and reasonable and in the public interest because it promotes the following goals of the comprehensive plan. Community engagement goal number one, land use and housing goal number one, and economic development goal number one. Finally, I do want to mention, because it is a CZ, there are conditions, I will not bore you with the long list of conditions and the modifications unless you want to go through them, but Duke Energy has requested that we modify one of those kind of on the fly, so we've been scrambling in the background before the meeting. And what they would like to add is for the roadway improvements, they would like to add a maximum contribution of $257,000. And Mr. Hunt Sengers agreeable to that language. Basically, what happened was when the, the land was sold off in different areas, there's contributions designated from each landowner, and so Duke wasn't comfortable with just us spelling out the roadway improvements and potentially leaving them on the hook for all of it, and so we want to add that amount in. And then we do need to have them on the record agree to that condition because we are modifying that based on the, the list of conditions we sent to them previously. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
There is no applicant presentation, correct?
No presentation, but they are available for questions. Jason Dolan with Timmins Engineering and Suzanne Price is representing Duke tonight.
Any, any questions?
I got a question, just for my own personal knowledge, but Radiator Specialty, when they bought that, who paved it? Did Radiator Specialty pave it?
The new owners that purchased the old Radiator Specialty, they, they paved their portion, so it's, it's a little odd. Radiator Road, the front portion is DOT, and then that back portion actually goes into private property. That's the portion they improved.
Because that used to be a dirt road years ago.
I had a question. With their heavy trucks, will that suffice $257,000? I mean, you guys are going to have a lot of heavy trucks coming in and out there.
Well, again, that's just their contribution, so the entire forty-seven acres, you've got the, the Radiator Specialty folks that came in and want to do a Light Industrial Park, you've got the acreage on the other side of Radiator, so there's been funds set aside where everyone contributes.
Thank you.
That's a state road, DMT.
Correct.
So they're going to have requirements themselves that they're going to have to, because we went over that water road, and they're going to make, where road people rebuild the entire road, meet their specifications.
Correct. Yeah, so DOT would, would hold or deny the driveway permit until the road improvements were made.
Any other questions? Okay, no one has signed up for, to, in public comments, so can we open and close public comments? Make a motion?
Motion to open and close public hearing.
All in favor?
Just?
Unanimous.
Prior to anyone making a motion, can we have someone representing the applicant come up? And because we don't have the conditions signed, we just want it to be on the record.
Yes.
So Ms. Suzanne Price is here to do that. Thank you.
Hello. So I just need to say.
You can take it out.
I agree. I do agree. On behalf of Duke Energy, I'm with JLL, I'm representing the owner right now. They have verbally committed this evening, just before the meeting, that if we will add the language, that it will not exceed 257,000, that they're, they're willing to sign.
All of the conditions?
All of the conditions, correct.
Thank you.
Yep, as they're stated.
Okay, well, my, my question is, is why 257,000? I mean, what?
I can't answer that. What I do know is that when they made the purchase, they made that agreement with the developer, but I don't have the details. So that's all they're saying is, don't hold us for more than that.
Gotcha. And, and what are the road improvements?
Oh, let's see, sidewalks, sight lighting, might need to help.
Yeah, there's, there's improvements on Radiator Road and Old Monroe, there's sidewalks, there's.
Yes, thank you.
So there's about two pages worth. It, it starts right here at the bottom with eastbound left turn lane, westbound right turn lane, and then it, it continues here with all of that.
Okay, all right. Well, if council's okay with that, that I'll, that's, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so.
Now, let me take the motion.
Do you have any council deliberation, or does somebody want to make a motion? Somebody make a motion?
Okay, I can do a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt consistency findings as read into record by staff for CZ 2016 dash zero zero seven M.
All in favor? Unanimous.
And then I'll make a motion to approve CZ 2016 dash zero zero seven M IT Industrial Park CZ modification as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, thank you, Brandon. That brings us to old business, adopt town council policies, Mr. McLaurin.
Well, you got a memo in your file. I want to, excuse me, first I want to apologize for my voice. The allergies got me hard this year, Dennis, and Sunday I couldn't even speak, members of my family were glad of it, so I'll do the best that I can. As you know, Walton and Hall did a, a priority workshop back in February and March, and you came up with several priorities, a lot of them were just one-word priorities such as public safety, and I met with you a previous meeting earlier this month, I think, and you agreed to allow me to do two things. One was to kind of expand from those one-word priorities, put some more meat on the bones, if you will, and also put together a sub, an additional priority called human capital. And so I won't read them word by word they are in your agenda package. In public safety, we cover all three. Transportation, we looked at, you know, roads and sidewalks. Economic development, you've heard some information on that. And under human capital, excuse me, we talked about parks and recreation and planning and public works and facilities, and under human capital, we talked about several things. We talked about recruitment, retention, and training, which we find are so very important. We also talked about organizational culture, trying to have a work-life balance, making sure that safety is a state of mind, and also staffing, both not only the direct service providers, the people out in the street, but also the internal support people. That would be people that like, collect the taxes, it would be people like in finance to make sure that the, the bills are properly accounted for and payment made. And then finally, continue to manage the town capital projects. And so I wanted to send that to you tonight and just ask if, if you're in agreement, if we would ask for your approval, approval of those, and we will use that through 2027.
Yes, sir. You want to make a motion, or you want to just?
I was going to make, ask questions.
Okay, go ahead. No, no, I didn't know what you were-
I thought somewhere else you were looking at them, I'm sorry. Outside of E, human capital, which I know you brought up wanting to add, on the other ones, which ones did you add?
I'd have to go back and look at that. Originally, you said like, public safety was what you originally said back in February, and I think at a previous meeting, I might have given you those details, but I can review what we've got here.
I just, because like, under transportation, you, it was like you added develop funding strategy for Old Monroe and Chestnut Connector betterments, perhaps using ARPA funds. Can you explain that one? I don't recall discussing that one.
Okay, well, what it is, is as we start to look at Old Monroe Road and Chestnut Connector, we put that in there to at least look at how do we want to fund that? I talked about that a little bit in the budget meeting tonight, as we talked about, how do we want to pay for it? And there was perhaps using ARPA funds, but it's not definite.
We're really not committing to it, we're just trying to develop something.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, I'm fine with that, yeah. I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Fair enough, good question.
Any other questions? Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the 2024 through 2027 council priorities as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous. Brings us to a resolution calling for referendum levy occupancy tax, Mr. McLaurin.
All right, and the attorney may need to help me with this. As you know, the bill passed this year, so we have been added as a city that could pass an occupancy tax, but before we do that, there has to be a vote by the people. As you heard Jim say earlier, this is a non-municipal election year, so if you wanted to put it on the ballot this fall, we would have to get the word to the county, I think, by August, I believe, and it would go on the ballot this fall. But to do that, we need you to approve this resolution, which we would then take over to the Board of Elections.
Any questions?
I get it right?
Yes, sir.
I think y'all know I'm against taxing people who come to the town, the state, and their families and business people coming to business with us, but I do think it's up to the people, and the people should have the opportunity to say yay or nay.
Any other, if there's no other questions, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution calling for a referendum on the, on the weather to levy a room occupancy tax and notifications in Union County Board of Elections.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Do we know if that's going to include the pet hotel?
It's going to include the what?
The pet hotel.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, that's a good question.
I think it also applies to short-term rentals, too.
They call it a hotel, yeah.
That's a good, that's a good question.
All right, Mike, new business.
Moving right along, in February of 2022, we came before you to, to get your approval on how you wanted some state money spent, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in the manager's update, but this is for a different pot of money. We received $250,000 from the state of North Carolina to be used for parking wreck. We mentioned it, I think, several months ago, and wanted to see if you had any ideas on how you would like to see that money used. We can, of course, change it in the course of time, but we do need to let the folks in Raleigh know so that they can send us a check, and we can start to earn some interest on that. I do have Hayden over here somewhere, just back from Disney World, that would be happy to give you some comments if you're so inclined.
Anybody want to hear any comments, or do you know where, what you want to do with the money, or?
Pass one up.
No, no, that, that, yeah, we, we-
Yeah, we had to take that one off.
We took it off.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
There's, there's an email that explains that, Tom.
Are we discussing this or not? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, we're discussing what Mike-
We'd like to discuss it, and Hayden can offer some comments if you'd like.
Well, we got 250,000 a couple of years ago, and we had talked about a pickleball court.
Right.
I guess the property where they wanted it, but don't we have a, another property on the other side of 74 that we might could do that?
Mr. Kramer will be happy to answer.
We got a land over there in the same light.
I think that's, I think that, I, I love that idea of the pickleball court, but I think what we need to do right now is just decide what we're going to use it on, not, I, I, I may be wrong if I say this, but if, all we really need to say is whether or not we could, if we use it for a pickleball court, and then, then we'll get the money. So, so, and we can talk about, we can talk about the land, you know, where to put it later.
That, that's a good idea.
Is that, is, am I correct to say that? I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
He, he's disappointed, but he'll get over it. I think what you're hearing most of these days are pickleball courts, is that right?
Yeah, we could put it anywhere, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you, you are correct. Currently, the, the town does, does own a couple parcels, and I think it's slated to come before you, just to kind of review what we did with land design. Yeah, pickleball comes up with, with some frequency, and realistically, the, the two properties that we own, you know, one in Holly Park, one is across from Extreme Ice Center, are more shovel-ready, if you will. We do own a parcel on Old Monroe, but it's kind of landlocked and has a weird easement to it. So, you know, you can't build a soccer field on the, on the parcels that we own, you can't build a, a baseball field, it's too small. So I think we need to be strategic on what we put there, and I think pickleball could fit, you know, in the Holly Park property. I think a little more strategic, looking at the other parcel to see if it's available, you know, see what the parking looks like. To put one pickleball court on a parcel doesn't really do much. You'll have so many arguments of, it's my turn to play, and I was here first, and I want to play this person. So if we are going to explore pickleball, I think a multiple court facility would, would be better off, and in all honesty, that fits the Holly Park property more, in my opinion, rather than the Extreme Ice Center property.
Again, we're not, we're not really discussing the property. I mean, we, it may be the best place to put it, but right now, we just need to stay what, four, and pickleball, and you, you could have gone home an hour and a half ago if, if we, you would know, and I'm saying that with a smile on my face, I'm not, I'm not. But, yeah, I think pickleball would, would be, and I do, but you guys, I think everybody does, really, but I'm not putting so-
We appreciate you having an opinion.
It's unusual, isn't it? Unusual. Okay, so, Mike, can, can, everybody, is pickleball okay? Is that, everybody got thumbs up on that? Yep, all right.
We will communicate that to Raleigh.
All right, let's get a motion that presently the intent would be to try to use that money for pickleball. If I could, somebody can make a motion. Okay, love, somebody make a motion, yes, please.
I'll make a motion to use the Parks and Recreation Legislative Grant for pickleball in Indyentro.
All in favor? Unanimous.
All right, we got that. You've got the manager's update, projects, and information on upcoming meetings. I won't go through that unless you want me to. I mentioned a while ago, in February of 2022, I think Adam did a great job presenting the $10 million and the $250,000 and all of that, and he gave you a memo at the time, and what happened was, the memo he gave you, by the time we transferred the, sent the money, the figures up to Raleigh, there was a transposing of figures of $20,000. Total amount stayed the same, it was in one block and it went to another block, okay? And so a question arose from one of the council members, it said, "The budget book says this, but the presentation says this, and which one is it?" And so we scratched our heads and talked about it a little bit, and so that's what happened, transposing a figure. Trina has a copy of the updated memo. Okay, well. Where we have, we basically have the information that we sent- Where we have, we basically have the information that we sent to Raleigh. And it matches the budget book. And the $20,000 was supposed to go into Block Four, Block Three, but it got switched about. So we apologize for that. We just, we don't need a budget amendment or anything like that. This is just FYI for you. Total figure remains the same, et cetera. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention. All right. Last thing I'm gonna mention, Mr. Mayor, is just to remind everybody, Town Hall will be closed April 19th through the 22nd. They're putting the new generator in. It's taking a long time. But that will complete our generator project. We also have a transportation plan. And while Town Hall will be closed on that Friday and Monday, we will still have litter sweep. So if you have not signed up, and if you'd like to help your community for a few hours and have breakfast, we would encourage you to come out. Mr. Mayor, I think that is all I have.
Thank you, Mike. That brings us to council comments.
Councilmember Gay.
I'm glad to be here, but thanks to the folks who came tonight, the ones who stayed and stepped it out with us. We're a long meeting, I'm sure they're ready to get out of here. I just want to stress that I want to thank the planning board, the engineering department for adhering to the UDO and keeping the town safe and protecting people's properties. That's what the UDO is all about. We don't want to take shortcuts on things like bridges or buildings or whatever. Safety is a rule in what we do. Everyone be safe on the way home, and see you next time.
Councilmember Barber.
First off, I just want to give thoughts and prayers out. Indian Trail lost one of our great citizens, Francis Lanny Knight, passed away. She was on town committees, very involved in the town. She was very active in the Greater Monroe Lines Club. She was actually the zone chair here. I know she was very active in Brandon Oaks. So I just want to give my thoughts and prayers, and of course, the community lost a wonderful lady. She was very active also in reaching out to the sheriff's office, if you so, you know. But she was a wonderful lady. Also, I'd like to remind everybody, the FFA plant sale at Sun Valley High School was this Friday and Saturday. I usually get my two or three tomato plants that I kill every year. The, but also, I think the sheriff's office is having a deputy run for a fundraiser. If you want to reach out to the sheriff's office and sign up on that, I think it's in July or June. Also, April 30th, South Piedmont Community College has a Union County Job Fair. A lot of high school kids, college graduates, that's a good place to go if you're looking to get your kid a job. So, the, and also Mayor Burns down in Monroe is hosting the National Day of Prayer downtown Monroe, May 2nd, if you want to go to that. Other than that, everybody have a blessed evening, and thank you for the budget presentation. Jim's got nine. This is my fifth one, and that was the best. Thank you.
Councilmember Ambergy.
What he said. God bless y'all. Have a good night.
You know, if I could interject just for a minute, thank you for those words. It was the staff that worked hard, Abby and them, Abby and Massey, and they worked like demons getting everything ready, so thank you.
Councilmember Alsobrooks.
Thank everyone that came out. Staff, thank you for all that you do. Next meeting, I think, is in May, but don't be surprised if you see me in a big coat over here because I'm freezing or something like that. But happy upcoming birthday to Tracy Alsobrooks, and that's all I have, so thank you.
Councilmember Buholic.
All right, it's been a really long night, so I'll make this really short. I do want to thank the staff. I think, you know, the budget was very well presented. I really appreciate that. I also appreciate the ones that shared their jackets to keep me warm tonight. Everybody drive home safe, and we will see you in May.
Mayor Com.
See, I shouldn't have took this out. Now, what'd you say? Thank the staff for everything you do. I'll tell you this a lot, but you're the best. And you're laughing back there, because I saw that. I saw you laughing back there. But you are the best, and I mean that with the bottom of my heart. I know this was a well-prepared budget meeting. And Jim, you know, I think you do a great job, and just proud to be a part of this team. And I think you need to hear sometimes how good y'all are. When you're good, you're good, you know? That's all you can say, is you're good, you're good. I also would like to touch on what Todd said with Francis Knight. I've known her for a long time, and she was a good, nice lady that lived over in Brandon Oaks and was on the Public Safety Committee for a number of years also. And anyway, it's a sad day for our town, and I'm looking forward to Hits After Six. And if you missed the last one, it was great. Don't miss the Duel and Pianos. It's gonna be a lot of fun. With that being said, I'm ready to go home, too, so God bless everybody here. Thank you for coming. And can I get a motion to close?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Unanimous.